Hi.
I now call to order the regular meeting of the Belvedere Planning Commission. The open forum is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the Planning Commission on any matter that does not appear on the agenda. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant commission consideration may be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak during the open forum? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, are there any commissioners or staff who wish to provide a report on any standing committees?
I would not like to report on a committee, but I'd like to report on the agenda. We have the proclamations listed on the consent calendar for our outgoing commissioners, Cara Piatt and Burke, and I would like to pull those and have the proclamation presentation now.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, Mayor Mark is here and will present the proclamations. To, we'll do Kevin Burke first.
Good evening, everyone. Pat and I were appointed, I believe, in the same meeting back in 2015 to the Planning Commission and didn't need glasses back then, so. Tonight, we're going to honor both Kevin Burke and Pat Carapiet for their, for the years of distinguished service here on the Planning Commission, and I have a proclamation, I'll read Kevin's first. "The City of Belvedere is pleased to honor Kevin Burke for outstanding service to the Belvedere community. Whereas Kevin Burke was born in Boston, one of six children, and graduated from Babson College as a marketing major, and whereas Kevin Burke later moved to San Francisco in 1988 and then to Belvedere in 2018. Kevin Burke and his husband Jeff Ferguson have been together for 22 years and just celebrated their 10th wedding anniversary. Kevin Burke enjoys the activities of pickleball, tennis, golf, walking his dogs, Libby and Jolly in his spare time. Kevin Burke founded his own ad agency in San Francisco, which was subsequently sold to a communications holding company in 2000. Kevin Burke moved on to Visa, where he ran global marketing and was on the team that took Visa public in 2008. Kevin Burke went on to lead marketing and international sales at Square and helped take them public in 2014. Kevin Burke has transitioned to consulting and advising and currently serves on three boards. Kevin Burke serves on the Belvedere Communications Committee, and Kevin Burke has served on the Measure M Fire and Emergency Services Committee, and Kevin Burke was appointed to serve on this Belvedere Planning Commission in July of 2022 and is currently the vice chair, having attended more than 30 meetings. Now, therefore, I, Peter Mark, Mayor of the City of Belvedere, and on behalf of the citizens of Belvedere, sincerely thank Kevin Burke for his dedication, commitment, and community spirit, and join in recognizing Kevin for his contributions to the Belvedere community. Thank you so much, Kevin." Vice Mayor Cooper has a quick little thank you for you.
Okay, look this way, kids. Wait, Jen, Peter, get together. Yeah, let's get a better picture for the breeze.
There was, there's additional whereas missing from yours that both Kevin and Pat are next month joining the city council. So we're looking forward to having them join us and it'll be another fun years ahead with that. Our second proclamation, where Kevin's impact was on the Planning Commission was shortened or impactful. Pat's has been long distinguished impactful and really thank him for that as well. So moving on to the proclamation, "The City of Belvedere is pleased to honor Patricia Carapiet for outstanding service to the Belvedere community. Whereas Patricia Pat Carapiet was born and raised in Chicago and attended Arizona State University, majoring in business. Pat worked after college at Joseph, sorry, Magnin, is that right?
Yeah.
Joseph Magnin, Pacific Bell, and Delta Airlines before becoming a real estate broker. Pat Carapiet met her husband John on a cable car while on vacation, and they raised two children, Joseph and Molly. Pat Carapiet moved to Belvedere in 1995. Pat Carapiet joined, sorry, Pat Carapiet and family enjoyed their interest in sailing and vintage cars, and she served as a commodore of the Belvedere Sailing Society nine times and is currently the communications officer. Pat Carapiet served on the Belvedere Lagoon Property Owners Association Board for eight years, including terms as president and treasurer. Pat Carapiet is the president of the Belvedere Community Foundation. Pat Carapiet was appointed to the Belvedere Planning Commission in June of 2015 and served continuously until November 2024, including being chair from February of 2022 through August of 2024, having attended more than 126 meetings, as well as serving at many additional meetings of several subcommittees, including the fence ordinance, tree ordinance, floodplain analysis, and odds, as well as the housing element subcommittee. Now, therefore, I, Peter Mark, Mayor of the City of Belvedere, and on behalf of the citizens of Belvedere, sincerely thank Pat Carapiet for her dedication, commitment, and community spirit, and join in recognizing Patricia Carapiet for her contributions to the Belvedere community. Thank you so much." Rebecca, do we have time if anyone wants to say anything, or do you, so welcome anybody to say anything for both Kevin and Pat.
Well, I will jump in. So I just want to thank both of you for all the work you've done on planning before you leave us for, I don't know if it's greener pastors or not, but before you leave us for city council. Pat, you've been a really integral part of the commission, and you've done so much work on the subcommittees for Mallard Point and the housing element, and you're so dedicated and you have an incredible attention to detail, and I think you've really helped Belvedere balance progress and growth with what makes, preserving what makes this community so great. And we're really going to miss having you. And Kevin, you as well, I think that you have an extremely high standard. You bring a real just excellence to your work on the commission and you're inquisitive and thoughtful, and I think that you always seek to come up with the best possible solutions for the community. And we'll miss you too, and I know that you're going to continue to do great work on council, both of you, but we will miss you a lot. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Well, I would like to thank Kevin for his time serving on the commission. He has brought a unique character to the commission and has added to the vitality of the commission. He's always been very level and considerate in all of his considerations, and I think that he will bring that to the city council, which will be a great addition for the community.
Thank you, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you and with all of you who are still on the commission. Ashley, I'm wishing you great luck in as the new chair of the commission, and I just want to thank the community. I think it's really, it's a pleasure to serve and I would encourage everyone to try it out because it can be quite fulfilling, but thank you.
I also want to thank the staff. It's been a pleasure working with the planning staff and I've gotten to know you all pretty well, and though I won't be working as closely as I have been, I will still be around to peck at your head. So, but it's been a pleasure and I think the city should be proud of their planning staff. I think they try to do a very good job and it's a challenging job and I know Sammy's newer, but I think he's grown into his position and has a great future. And Nancy, without her, we don't need to check any information because she has it all in her head, the history for how many years? Since 2001. So, and then Rebecca is taking over as leading the building and planning department, and I think she's grown into the job and I think that she has a lot more to give to the city, and I think that the citizens should be thankful for the staff we have. So I want to thank you all for that. And for the ice cream and crispy treats. Rebecca made the crispy treats, so you should really try one.
Just for you, Pat.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to close public comment, or can we just, yes, okay, we'll close public comment now. Okay, so moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be non-controversial. Unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the council staff or public, the consent calendar will be adopted by one, by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence that they appear on the agenda. Would any members of the Planning Commission like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to remove a consent calendar item?
No, thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt the item listed on the consent calendar?
Move to adopt item number two on the consent calendar.
Second.
Oh, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing. So I'd like to open the public hearing for 322 San Rafael Avenue.
Thank you Chair Johnson and members of the Planning Commission. For your consideration this evening, there's an application for design review, demolition, exception to total floor area and revocable license to construct a new single-family residence and detached garage at 322 San Rafael Avenue. Several changes have been made to the project since the August 20th meeting, which the applicants may wish to speak on during their presentation. This report will describe only the current application before you tonight. The site contains a single-story residence and attached two-car garage on a relatively flat 26,000 square foot lot. The site above single-family residences to the north, south, and west, and Belvedere Lagoon to the east. The project proposes to demolish the existing 5,450 square foot residence and dock and construct a new 4,800 square, 4,800 square foot, single-story residence. The proposed home would be set back 12 feet and 2 inches from the front property line, 6 feet from both side yards, and 15 feet from the rear. Per FEMA regulations, the city's floodplain management ordinance, a new single-family dwelling in the AE flood zone must be raised to base flood elevation plus 1 foot of freeboard. The project proposes to raise the new home 14 feet 4 inches above existing grade at the garage, 15 feet at the bedrooms, 19 feet 5 inches at the living room, and 15 feet and 3 inches at the primary bedroom. Additional improvements would include a new sewing pool, dock and bulkhead, exterior lighting and landscaping. Viewed from San Rafael Avenue, the project proposes a wood entry gate and 18 by 8 foot tall garage door. Viewed from the rear, the project proposes a fixed window and sliding door at the primary bedroom and a 26 foot 6 inch by 12 foot 11 inch sliding glass door at the living room. The project does not propose windows or doors on the right side of the new residence. And on the left side, the project would include glass windows and doors at the bedrooms and a 20 foot, 21 foot 5 inch wide by 7 foot tall window at the kitchen. Colors and materials include stained wood siding at the garage and entry walls, travertine and split-faced stone veneer on the building walls and roof fascia, and darkened aluminum exterior windows and doors. The project would install three types of exterior lights throughout the property. These include 16 path lights around the courtyard and rear yard, 15 shielded wall sconces around the exterior entry doors, and four white lens pool lights. The project would include an assortment of trees, shrubs, and perennials. Facing San Rafael Avenue, the project proposes three oak trees and 48-inch boxes, three Japanese maples, and one Pacific dogwood. The existing cedar tree would be preserved. Along both side yards, the project would plant English laurel expected to grow 10 to 15 feet tall. Within the courtyard, plantings would include five olive trees, one Japanese cherry, Western red bud, and dwarf ketsura. And facing the lagoon, plantings would include coffee berries, silk tassel, silk tassel bush, Western red bud, and strawberry trees. The project requests an exception to total floor area to allow 4,800 square feet where 4,000 square feet are permitted. In order to grant an exception to total floor area, the Planning Commission must make each of the following findings. The first is that primary views from the adjacent properties, as well as from the street, are not significantly impaired by the additional square footage. Primary views are generally views of Mount Tamalpais, San Francisco Bay and its environs, bridges and the surrounding hills of Tiburon or Belvedere Island as seen from inside the public or common areas of the home. The term view is not intended to mean an unobstructed panorama of all of the, all or any of the above. Regarding primary views from the street, the additional floor area does not cause significant impairment as the Tiburon Hills are generally not within sightlines when walking on San Rafael Avenue. Primary views from the adjacent neighbor to the left at 320 San Rafael would not be significantly impaired by the additional square footage. And primary views from the adjacent neighbor to the right at 328 San Rafael would not be significantly impaired. This photograph submitted by the owner of 328 San Rafael Avenue shows an outline of the proposed primary bedroom. Staff does not find that this additional floor area to be significant impairment of primary views. Findings must be made that unusual characteristics are applicable to the parcel, which minimize the impact of the greater floor area, and that the structures are appropriate and mass bulk in character for the parcel. Staff recommends that both findings can be made. Here, the parcel is unusually large at 26,000 square feet. The large lot allows the greater floor area to be evenly spaced around the property to minimize its impact from any one area. The project meets all development standards for the R1L zoning district and minimizes mass and bulk by keeping the residents at one story. And fourth, the additional square footage will not substantially reduce the privacy otherwise available to residents of adjoining properties. The additional square footage would not reduce the privacy to the residents adjoining the properties at 328 San Rafael, as no windows are facing the neighborhood at 328 San Rafael. Windows facing 320 San Rafael are out of sight lines and will be screened by the new English laurel. The project requests a revocable license for private improvements within the San Rafael Avenue right-of-way. These will include a new sidewalk, driveway, walkway, and landscaping. Revocable licenses may be granted by the city council when there is some benefit to the public, provided that they, the proposed encroachments comply with design review requirements. Staff has received two letters in support of the project and three letters expressing concern. The concerns have centered around view obstruction and inadequate screening of the lagoon facing windows and doors. The project is exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the draft resolution, staff finds the project to comply with the zoning ordinance and general plan and recommends the planning commission adopt the resolutions for all associated entitlements. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you Sammy. Are there any questions for staff or members of the commission? No, okay. Now, we'd like to invite the applicant up or applicant's representative to speak about the project. So please come to the podium and you'll have 10 minutes.
Yes, please.
Chip, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yep, I've got it. Can you hear us? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. Sorry for the technical challenges there. We're back. We were here in August, as Sammy said, and at that point in time, if you remember, we weren't actually ready to ask for formal approval because we had some rework that we needed to do on square footage and volume. But we used that meeting to get input from the commission and from multiple neighbors, and now we are back with a number of really significant, major changes to the original design that you saw several months ago. And these changes are really done in the spirit of trying to find a win-win with all of the neighbors. We've made a number of significant changes, compromises, I would call them. The Fed will go into in detail, but just a couple of the big highlights. First, we eliminated the second floor entirely. So the house is now entirely a single-floor, a single-story structure. Second, we've lowered the great room roof by more than 2 feet. The great room interior ceiling height has been dropped to 13 feet. Combined, this results in a 23% reduction in glazing on the lagoon facing northern side of the house. We've also moved the house further back from the lagoon by another 3 feet. And for perspective, the current great room now sits 14 feet further back from the lagoon than the current house. In fact, there is now 7,400 square feet of open landscaped space between the house and the lagoon. That open space between the house and the lagoon is as large or larger than many entire lots of most of our neighbors. Concerns about light pollution, given how far back the house now sits, I think are incredibly exaggerated, particularly when combined with the significant reduction in glazing and the technology that we will use in the glass. Third, we've added an additional foot from the setbacks on both sides of the house as concessions to our neighbors on each side. I'll stop there, there's more. Let Fed go into more of the details, but in conclusion, you know, we've made these changes really in an effort to find a win-win with all of our neighbors. We hope to be neighbors. This is a unique lot, one of the largest lots on the lagoon, and our approach all along has been to build a house that takes advantage of this unique lot in a way that will be additive to the lagoon community and enhance property values for the entire neighborhood. And I believe that this house maximizes the value of this lot. Fed, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you very much, Chip. Commissioners, good evening. My name is Federico with Butler Arms and Architects. Commissioners, when we were here last time in August, you certainly gave us a lot to consider. The design team, together with Chip and Juliette, have taken the last three months to process the feedback, listen to and collaborate closely with neighbors and staff, and we're back this evening with an improved project. We have many updates to present, and I want to highlight a couple as well. Although you're going to start to sense a theme between what Sammy presented and what Chip presented. But here we go. Number one, we have removed the second floor. Thank you, Janet. This preserves the open feeling for the like-as-family and their rear yard. And number two, we have reduced the amount of glass on the lagoon side. Together with increasing the landscaping, use of darker heartsky material, architectural elements such as overhangs and wall extensions, and a reduction in landscape lighting, we have reduced the light pollution and reflection for the water neighbors along Lord Road. So those were the two major changes I wanted to highlight, but we do have a long list of other improvements that speak to the neighbor feedback process, and I can walk you through the exhibits to show these changes. This is our neighborhood engagement map, which shows similar to Sammy's list, the neighbors that we have engaged with, a couple of them have supported the project. Several still have concerns about the project, but we have collaborated with all of them, have had good conversations and have seen significant improvements to the project because of them. This is a view of the property as it stands currently. As Chip mentioned, it is a special lot, and I think we have so much interest from the community because everybody knows it's such a special lot. It is improved with an existing single-family home, which measures 5,450 square feet. As we need to elevate it for FEMA requirements, you could see the overlay of the existing home with the proposed home, you could see that the massing and the siding of the proposed home is very sensitive to the existing structure and context, even with the additional 3 to 4 feet of height increase. Obviously, if we didn't have that FEMA increase, you could see that obviously we're, we're very compatible. These next set of slides will go quickly as they exhibit the changes that we've talked about and that we've made. We've eliminated the second floor and the second floor balcony. We have reduced the height of the great room by 2 feet 2 inches for a ceiling height of 13 feet. We have reduced the square footage of the home by 650 square feet from existing 5,450 square feet. By reducing a lot of the mass, we have increased the setbacks just about everywhere. We've increased the side setbacks by 1 foot, the front setback by 4 feet. The great room was shifted back 3 feet, and the hallway that connects the great room to the bedroom wing is shifted a little over 5 feet away from the lagoon. And as you could see, that open space has also increased to almost 7,400 square feet. And we do have the landscape architect, hopefully I'll share a few minutes and they can speak to all the landscape thought that's gone. Hopefully, I'll share a few minutes and they can speak to all the landscape thought that's gone in there. This exhibit shows the reduction in glazing that was discussed at the last hearing. We have a 23% reduction on the north facade. We also have a 27% reduction in the east facade. And overall, we have a decrease of 29% for overall glazing on the home. These are some night renderings. They're based on a photo that was provided by a neighbor on Lourdes Road. It's from their rear yard and it's very focused and zoomed into our project. The top is the existing home. The bottom left, if you're, I think we're all looking at the same screen, is the first proposal. And then the bottom right is the current design. As you could see, I think significant improvement. We have eliminated the second floor. The primary bedroom is fully, I think disguised behind landscape. And again, surface design can speak about that. And then the interesting part for us was that the overall increase of windows and reflection is a 6% increase compared to the existing condition. This is our neighborhood study map that shows, again, kind of the general sighting of the house and the neighborhood context and pattern. As you could see, I think we're very compatible with the neighborhood pattern. Our site plan, as was noted earlier, the massing of the building is distributed along the property. But for the most part, we're really insulated on the two sides, insulated in the front, and then insulated from the lagoon with that 7,400 square feet. Our side elevations, we are proposing a single-story home at this point. The great room is 13-foot height. And you can see a little bit of that female elevation gain. The two sides are fully hedged, so should not be factors. And then I'll speak about the front facade and the rear facade in the next two slides. I'm almost done here. This is an updated rendering of the front elevation. As you can see, the material palette is very compatible with the landscaping, with the nature. And to borrow an adjective used by the commissioner, it nestles nicely into the site. There's been a lot of discussion and comment about the travertine. That is the photo on the top left. You can see it's beige, warm and textured. It's compared to White House on Peninsula. That's the white that you see in the background. And as you could see, it's very kind of neutral. And it's intended to really blend into the environment. And our back facade or rendering of our rear elevation, which as you could see, I think is very nicely nestled into the site. Again, it's, I would say, well and thoughtfully landscaped. With that, I'd like to thank you commissioners. Again, I'd like to thank the community for engaging this process and giving feedback that has contributed to this thoughtful design. The design is sensitive to the scale and the context of the neighborhood and the right design for the special property. I'm available for questions, as is Janet. If I could give a couple of minutes over to surface design or landscape architect, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Fred. My name is James Lord. I'm a partner at Surface Design Landscape Architects. We've had the pleasure to do several landscapes here in this beautiful city of Belvedere. So we're very happy when we're asked to work on this project. And I think hopefully, as you'll see, that we hopefully listened. The majority of the landscape is really about tying into the existing neighborhood and providing adequate screening from the neighbors after the conversations with the neighbors. So as was spoken earlier, there's almost a, the two property lines are screened with English laurels. And is that working? There we go. But we started with what's there right now. So we're looking to keep the cedar in the front, the European birch on the property line. And there's currently three southern magnolias that are in decline. But what we'd like to do there is that we'd like to keep them to hide the the destruction of the project for as long as they can while they hold place. But they will be replaced. They're going to be replaced with trees that do not lose their leaves. Along those edges, we're looking to reuse, as you can see, the strawberry trees there in these locations out front. Again, to get that privacy for the primary wing of the building. And you can see the two saucer magnolias up there. Trees on site. These are the ones that we're looking to remove. The green ones, we're looking to save and transplant other places along the property. And then the new trees layered in. So there'll be a total of 43 trees. That's including the ones that are going to remain and the ones that we're saving and transplanting and then new ones. The character along the front, we're looking to use oak trees to fit into the neighborhood along the sides and then keeping the cedar tree. And then adding a little bit of color and interest with Japanese maples and a dogwood. The biggest moment to talk about, which I think many people have already this evening, is the hedge that's along the property road. So we're looking to install an immediate hedge, an insta-hedge. That's it there in those boxes right there. So it'll be eight feet tall on installation. Growth rates is between a foot and two. My experience was more like two and three feet a year. So I always tell my clients all over, you plant them first before construction starts. And by the time instruction ends, you've got a giant hedge. So we'd be doing something like that. Again, it tolerates pruning. It's three feet wide. We're going to plant them three foot on center. So pretty much be an instant hedge day one. These are the interior trees. The idea here is that we have more sort of solid denser trees as it meets Centerfield Avenue, again, to create sort of a protection and use for the neighborhood. And then as you meet the interior, you get a little more seasonality with cherry trees, katsura trees with their incredible fragrance. And then Japanese maples and Western wetwoods in the interiors. At the lagoon, it's really important. We waited towards the native species along this edge here. Again, then densifying along the two neighbors' properties with the arbutus trees, which do not lose their leaves, and paired them with the silk castle bush, as you see there. That will take out everything on the lower area. So visual screening from the sides will be there, along with the existing birch tree. It'll add a lovely sort of transition from the water to the building edge. And then other natives that are saying flowering currents, little olives and coffee berry in front. And then, I'm sorry, so fast. And then for pops of color around the whole, some perennial plants from Garia to Echinacea and Salvia. And it's wild strawberry as well. A very low-key palette. So thank you again for your time. And if you have any questions on the landscape, please don't hesitate to ask.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant, applicant's representatives from the members of the commission?
Can you go back? One of the things you cited during your presentation, Federico, was a 6%, was only a 6% increase in glazing versus existing. Can you just explain that a little bit more in detail?
I certainly can, Commissioner Kevin. It's the bottom right image. It's actually a combined area of window and reflection, just because I understand that the reflection off the water is just as important. So we measured, yeah, using the top image, the combined glass and reflection off that. I compared it to the bottom right, and it is only a 6% increase. Correct.
And then one of the other things, when I was onsite with you and your colleague, is you talked about from the Bayview neighbor that there was actually a 16% increase in water view, according to some analysis that you did.
Yes, correct. We have that exhibit. We didn't go through it. I can certainly go through it a little bit. But my colleague Chelsea visited the site shortly after the first hearing in late October, sorry, late August. I was there last week with Sean and his wife Catherine. This is a photo kind of analysis that we did. The photograph on the top left is the view from their deck. It's a little difficult to see the water, so we zoomed in. And there's two views on the zoomed-in version on the right side. There's the top image, which is the existing condition. And again, we just did very simple measuring of areas. And the current water view you can see measures 312. If we take a look at the bottom. Yes, please. Just the bottom photos. So the top photo is the existing condition with the story poles, again, just measuring the water. This was taken, by the way, with the old story poles. So the new changes, which are the removal of the second floor, the reduction of the great room, the shift of the great room and the shift of the hallway can only improve those conditions. But as you could see, just taking, again, just a very simple measurement of area. If we compare the overlay of the existing with the overlay of the proposed, we have an increase of actual water view of 16%.
Thank you. Could you just scroll back down again so I can see? Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah. Real quick, just to add, on that bottom view, bottom right view, you could see just the overlay of, again, the new water view that will be created with the overlay in blue dash line of what is existing right now.
Got it. And then I did have one question. If we could go back to landscaping, a quick question. One of the concerns from the, one of the neighbors on Lourdes was, you know, what's happening with this landscaping that could potentially provide some screening for the great room, the glazing in the great room? And so if you could just talk a little bit about how that at maturity will sort of look and feel. And I think it's sort of that center cluster is probably.
Yeah, so that's, there's a larger shrubs. So especially when you're on the water, it actually perspectively screens the maturity of what you're going to see while allowing great view to look out over the top. So it's maintained, it'll be maintained at a certain level. All the plants there, there's no giant ones that are going in. So it should seamlessly work to benefit both people. That makes any sense?
Yeah, it does. But the maturity height could be up to eight feet. I mean, obviously, it depends on how they're maintained.
It's not, you know, especially when you're on water, it just plant material doesn't, is not as robust.
So it doesn't tend to achieve its highest.
Exactly. And then also maintenance alone, because I think both the client and it's going to want to see their view too.
Right.
You should be seeing self, you know, maintain the sizes you want.
Great. And then one of the other things related to the cedar. So just because I know you're a highly reputable firm in terms of what can be done or what's your confidence in terms of protecting that cedar during construction?
A lot. So we're going to, we use extensive sort of, it'll be chain like fences around certain back areas measured from the diameter of the tree, make sure that, make sure we're in the drip line. As you can see, the ADU is not going in the first hit, so we will be able to make sure. And also, you know, maintaining it as well.
Great, thank you.
Before we move on from that question, I just want to add on to that. So if you look at page A023 and A030, you have kind of the landscaping plan and then the structures for a side-by-side comparison. It looks like the ADU is sitting right on top of that tree. So I just want to get clarity on the distance between the tree and the ADU. So A23 is showing the tree here, and then A30 shows the ADU sitting on top of it. So.
I'll take this one. So the ADU is a little bit generic where it's shown. We'll definitely develop that in the ADU application. And we'll work with our arbers who we have in terms of what is the right distance for the tree with relation to the ADU.
Okay, thank you. Related to this corner of the property, you also have two cork oaks planted on the, on the other side. Beautiful trees. I'm just, is there enough room? And will those trees get in the way of the cedar? Will it block light for the cedar? Is it, are they all going to be harmonious together in that corner?
Sure. No, we picked that species for that very reason. It doesn't get that big, cork oaks compared to other ones. Again, you can read Western Garden Book and say it'll be 1,000 feet tall. It actually, they never really get that big. If you really want to look at a pair, there's a drive-in when you go to Napa along Jacuzzi. They planted them, and I've been watching them over years and years and years, and they're not gotten, even in the ideal spot, as big as they say in the books. So what we did do here is that because that species is really slow growing, that it would complement and have enough room around the existing cedar as well. The cedar will wind up and stuff. So again, there's a balance that you want to be. And when you pair trees, they, I'm going to get real weird here. But trees actually talk to each other. And so, and having groups and nestles of trees together like this actually helps their own growth in the long term.
Okay, great. Thank you. I had a question for, I have a question for the landscape architect. Sorry. You're the man of the hour here. So we're going to talk about the rear by the lagoon side. And the best way for me to describe it is that center planted area, sort of the oval area. The concerns that we're hearing from the people on Lourdes is that the house is being raised, the glazing is up in the air. And they feel, and this is based on other projects that have gone through. They feel that they will be greatly impacted by the lighting, both inside and outside of the house. So my question is, the long way about, is someone recently on the lagoon wanted to block a big project. They didn't want to see it, but they didn't want to block their view when they were in their house looking out to see the water. They wanted to block them. So their landscape person came up with a plan of planting trees along the back. I'm not saying the whole back, but maybe some trees in this middle area so that when you're inside the house, you see out the water and it's not blocking the water view. But rather, the crown of the tree blocks some of that upper portion of the glazing where the light comes out.
Right. Well, I think what we're planning on doing is something similar to that, but a little different. So what, if you, the area in the middle there where most of the things, it's mounted up. If you can see those sort of concentric rings, there's a topography. So it's actually going to be a little mound up so that we can make sure that the one it's the earth forming and the plants that are on top that will secure that and really make the most out of blocking you from the neighbors from one piece. And we can look at, and there's other trees. If you see the three little trees on the one side of the glass, those will mature eventually and do exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, so, and then the grouping in front of the primary. in front of the primary bedroom. So you basically have the one strawberry tree, Arboreus Marina. And then you have the other shrubbery around there. And then, and you're going to be replacing the Western Rhodes bud to a different tree?
No, there's going to be combination in there. There's the, it's, yes, it'll have, it'll have the strawberry tree, which is the mature one, so it'll immediately block out views. And then we're pairing that with the tassels trees, which are get really quite big, they're native trees. And they're dense. And so you won't see any views from them. So they basically, there's the top of the canopy, like you're talking about there. We're taking care of the bottom with the tassel trees. And there is a few red buds in there, but that's, they're sort of inconsequential. They're more for a little pop of color in there. They're not going to, the views and all that stuff's really blocked by the, by the tassel trees.
Okay, because the concern is on the Western red bud or whatever it's called, is that it's deciduous. And then, you know, sort of kind of half the year.
No, no, yeah, I get it. Well, we did, I mean, seriously, we placed those non, non deciduous trees around the whole thing. So you see the first two and there's six. That's fine. But anyway, what, what we're trying to do is to literally place them where we, we, we will, we actually will even in the field, look at adjusting them and talking and going across the, we do this all the time. You go across the neighborhood, you say, hey, so we move a little back and forth and massage things to make sure that we've got it right. But the plan is to actually literally screen that whole side. So during all seasons.
Okay. And then I had a question for the design team. Are you using Lutron?
Yeah, we really haven't gotten to that level. Maybe I can get engaged chip on that conversation. Chip and Juliette. So Lutron is a lighting control system, which usually is, is a keypad controlled. So you have either six or four keypads and you basically can turn all the house on with one button, turn all the house off with another button. And basically program the light scenes. Usually all, what I can say is for a house like this is yes, we, we do this type of lighting control system.
Okay. And it also controls, I may not use the right term, but the intensity of the light. So that is also going to be a concern for the interior light pollution going out from the windows, because we now realize that it's not just exterior lighting that causes light pollution, but it's the interior lighting also. So we'll, we'll deal, we'll deal with that.
That sounds good. And you're correct. Usually we will not program it to ever go to full intensity. It will always be dimmed to, actually, you, you get a pretty good light. I mean, looking at these, you know, kind of warming condensed lights are working just fine. So I think this is kind of what we're looking for.
And you're just doing small recessed lights on the inside?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll save the rest for comment.
Yeah.
This is mostly a question for staff, but it's really the only metric that we have around glazing is the size of the paint itself. Because obviously lumens are what we're talking about, not the size of the paint.
Yes, we don't regulate interior lights, but we have seen, now that we have a few of these homes with the Lutron systems, we're sort of, you know, have learned the hard way on some of them. And so we don't regulate interior lighting, but it's certainly a conversation that can be had.
Thanks.
Did you have any other questions?
Oh, no, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Kevin, Alex?
No.
No.
Just quickly, the, the cork oaks in the front are going to be in planter boxes. Those wood, what are they? They're in the ground. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Ritter. Yeah.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson has her hand raised whenever you're ready.
Yes, please go ahead, Jenna.
Okay, thanks so much. And I, I apologize that I can't be there with you all in person. So my only question, because I, I believe that the other commissioners have, have handled all my other questions, is with respect to the lagoon facing landscaping, is the amount of lighting that's in the landscaping, I know that we, we went through this in great detail in August, is the amount of lighting that's anticipated to be in the, in landscaping itself the same as it was in the, in the previous proposal?
We're going to get the exact numbers here. I know there was a reduction that currently there are seven landscape lights kind of sprinkled around the, the, the rear yard. And
Thanks.
And we'll get you a comparison number from the first application.
Right.
I do want to note that in the first application, what was a significant kind of elimination was the overhead lighting on the soffits, which we did have in the first application. Obviously, it was recommended that we remove those. And it was removed. And we just have the, the sconces that you can see at the top left, exterior sconces.
We used to previously have nine step lights and instead we got some feedback that they should be shielded without passing through. So put that, reduce it by 30% and then change it to the, that's one of those shapes down pass forwards.
Yep. Okay, got it. And, and I know that we'd also discussed the lighting in what I'll call the, the glass hallway that goes between the, the bedroom block and the main living block. And were any changes made to the, to the lighting on that hallway? I know that the hallway was moved back towards the, towards the street more and, and shortened in distance, but was, was the lighting scheme changed at all?
Similar to the, our kind of thought on Lutron in that we have some initial thoughts, but haven't actually developed it yet. We haven't actually developed lighting plan yet. So we do recall the feedback and will take into account when we are developing the lighting plan. I recall the feedback was to recommending to put the lighting install at lower floors.
At floor as opposed to up. Yeah.
But we haven't actually built a lighting plan, so no change up.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you. Hang on, don't leave. So there was a lot of concern about the color last time and you had mentioned that this has changed a little bit. And I wonder if you have a sample with you?
Absolutely. It might take a second to get it out of the bag here. And are you looking for a sample of the stone specifically?
The stone choice last time, I think there was concern about how much light it was going to reflect. And so there's been a change from August to now. So this stone is just going to absorb that light more and it's not going to create.
And we have two types of stone, the travertine, I think it's still basically the travertine. That's what we specified in the first round. It is a little bit darker, which is the one Janet has. If we compare it to the white, again, from 45 or from the project on Peninsula, you could see, again, it's very beige-y, warm looking. And then the split face stone, I see Ty holding the, the significant material change, which we didn't really touch on, are the hardscape materials, especially on the lagoon side, which was somewhat visible in that last rendering. But Ty has them here.
Ty, if you want to speak about the.
Can you, can you pass them around?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we were, the landscape paving was tying in closer to the lighter paving of the house. So we're now a much more toned down, kind of darker, still in the same family, but much darker.
Okay, thank you. Um, so on the materials topic, you referenced a light colored decorative gravel for the roof. But in the staff report, it mentions a dark roof. So I just, what, what is the color and material of the roof?
That, yeah, thank you for catching that. The roof, that was from a previous, thank you. That was my previous middle, whenever we had the second floor to simplify something a little bit nicer to look at. But now that there is no longer a second floor, we'll be doing that flat gray roofing membrane throughout the whole project.
Okay.
There is no more gravel at the roof.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, please. And then my last question slash comment has to do with the revocable license. So on some of the drawings, it looks like that paving goes into the RL area, those paths and things. And I just want to clarify that all of the paving that's happening in the RL is going to be sidewalk and not a continuation of the path.
I see, yes, what you're, you're talking about. I don't know the exact revocable license drawing that was used. And we, we could just make sure that that is corrected if it needs to be and definitely understand that outside of the property line, it has to meet to city standards.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I think my other questions were answered. Actually, this is a really small one. It could be a typo, but lot coverage went from 6342 and now it's 7213. So did I miss something? Is that a typo? For lot coverage? It should in theory be less.
Sorry, can you, where are you seeing that 62 number?
From the August stuff.
Okay, yes, I can speak to that. That was a, we were rereading the code definitions to make sure we had everything on correct. And I think it was in this submission that we realized that the language of the code for lot coverage meant that if anything's covered, essentially, even if it's paving and not interior condition space.
So that it's including everything under the roof.
Exactly, yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? From commission? No? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will open public comments. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? If so, please come up to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Nana Hart and I am a property owner straight across the street. And I'm here to thank the architect for being so generous and on top of it, contacting the neighbors and sending out all the changes and so on. And what impacts me has been so greatly changed by moving the whole garage structure, the future ADU back into the property. The only thing which I discussed before is that due to this fairly heavy overhang on this brown major wall that contains the garage and the entry is dark. You can view it well, then it, it melts in or it doesn't, it makes it heavy. And I think if it didn't have the overhang, it would melt in. But with the overhang, it may, makes it a little more mass and bulk for the streetscape. I don't know if you can lighten it up, if that would be of anything, but it's not a big deal. I also appreciate that the house has been brought down in height. I appreciate that the big tree has been saved or we're hoping to have it saved. And that you have brought the whole proposal in from the neighbors. But when I, thanks to your drawing sent to me, started really looking at them, I am now going to do a thing that our former city attorney used to do, and that was bringing visual aids. And it has to do with the windows that face, that face the this looks tall, but this is not very tall. It's a little more than eight feet. Most of the windows, when you remove all the windows in the whole house, are 10 feet tall. Actually, I should be 15. Here, will you sit in that? This is how tall all the windows are in there. That's 10 feet tall window. The windows that are 30 feet tall facing the level. So the windows that are 30 feet tall are going to be that tall. 40, 40, 40, 40. This is one 26 feet of that, plus another eight feet of 30 feet tall glass facing the level. I don't know what constitutes an extensive glazing, but that, again, it doesn't impact me. But I think as a resident, I'm thinking more about all my neighbors. This is not an airport. It's not a Macy's window on Union Street. It's a house on a very picturesque, small lagoon, surrounded by other homes on this lagoon. I think this is a major, major impact. It's a light pollution and I think the applicant should be more neighborly and considerate and be a more environmentally concerned person. Thank you.
Can I just ask, when people come up to make comments, to please use the microphone? It's really hard for people on Zoom or when we're going back to do the minutes to, we can't hear anything. Well, it would help if people just remembered to use it. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. May I please ask Sammy to put up photographs? I'm David Lycus and I live at 328 Santa Phil Avenue, right next to the proposed project. Sammy, could you please put up the color photograph with the overlay if possible? Fed, Mike, you have it?
The color photograph.
On the website published. The website published staff report had late mail under this address and had the three first letters.
This is a little unorthodox here.
He wants that one. Okay, is it? Here. Oh, now he's changed to his. Mr. Lycus?
I think he has it.
I think he has it.
This is what you want?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Oh, I think he got it off.
Okay, there you go.
No, it's not what he submitted.
No, that's as far as I can help.
First, I want to express my appreciation to the applicant, his efforts to adjust the original plan based on community feedback. However, I have significant concerns about the project. Extending the residence close to the waterfront would severely strip our views of the hills and open skies. Regarding the request for floor area exemption beyond 4,000 square feet, the design does not appear to meet section 13 of the code, which states that additional square footage should not impair primary views from neighboring properties. Unfortunately, extending the resident to the waterfront would do exactly that. I also want to mention that my family and I have never been faced in this sort of situation. We are not professionals in this matter, and we have been consistently concerned not only about the second level, but about moving the home from its, to the lagoon frontage blocking our view. And even though this concern was not emphasized initially as much. In closing, I respectfully ask that the planning board consider these impacts and request further design adjustments to better balance the applicant's goals with the character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yeah, please come up.
I give my time to my husband, David. Thank you.
Thanks. My name is David, David Parquet. I live at 12 Leward Road here in Belvedere with Katie. She, along with our neighbors at number four, 14, and 16, support the comments that I made in my memo to you guys as well as tonight. As a preface, we do want to also express our thanks to Chip and Juliette Berg, the project owners and the architect Federico and his team for their efforts in reaching out to us. That was very, very much appreciated. We do hope that all of us can reach a mutually acceptable design for the future of our neighborhood. I provided you with some comments for this meetings, for this evening's meeting, a memo dated November 18th. I do not want to repeat many of them here, but instead I want to focus on the great room. And in particular, what Donna talked about. To the point, although we do appreciate the reduction in the ceiling height and window height in that room, there are still some of those extremely large areas of glass that will significantly result in light pollution on our, on us and our neighbors on Leward. In my written comments, I included the same three photographs that Fed presented of the night view of the existing, the previous design and the present design. The photo that I handed out to you, if you hold it at arm's length, I printed it at this size and that perspective, that is exactly what it looks like from our windows. In other words, it takes up fully 50% of our view. That project does. Now, the other 50%, we can still see Mount Tam, we can see the lagoon, of course, but that's 50% of our view. Of course, the great room glass does not take up the entire space in that photograph. But you can clearly see the five immense sliding doors on the northeast corner of that room. As Donna indicated, that's 585 square feet of glass, for heaven's sakes. Additionally, you can see, and very importantly, as the landscape fellow talked about, if you recall back to his picture, and I'm sure we can bring it back up again, there is almost zero landscaping in that area. As you, Ms. Karapet talked about, in the center area that blocks that view. Almost zero. So that entire area, call it a movie screen, is presented to the lower neighbors. In sum, it does not at all seem acceptable to us as water neighbors that we should have such light pollution visited upon us, nor should we be subjected to the frankly awkwardness of watching the nightlife of the Burgs through those windows. I noted at night, this room will most likely be lit up with a LeCron system. The kitchen is in there, the dining room is in there, and it will most likely be the most used room in the house. That situation in that photograph will most likely be the case every night. Surely some findings need to be made that mitigate for the water neighbors, the light pollution that will result from this situation. This could be further reduction in the glass area, at least some additional landscaping, or both. I have a suggestion. If additional landscaping is interesting for you, as you talked about in this pair of care of yet, which I hope it is, and assuming you're prepared this evening to approve this project, I would suggest a condition to the approval. And specifically, I'll read it here. I've been reading a lot of this, but I'll read it here. Quote, applicants shall work with the water neighbors to update its landscape plan in the areas shown on the attached drawing. And let me get that for a second. And I'm sorry, I didn't have very good luck at all last time with any technical issues with putting things up on the screen. So I brought them, I can deliver them tomorrow to the. But anyway, applicants shall work with the water neighbors to update its landscape plan in the areas shown in the attached drawing to ensure that light pollution from the great rooms and the bedroom windows, by the way, are significantly screened from view. I'm not asking for them to be completely screened, but that they be broken up. You can see that this is a Google Earth shot into which I have dropped the applicant's exact landscape plan that's been talked about today. And I'm focusing on exactly the same area that Ms. Karapet talked about. And you can also see that the views that I put from the three water neighbors at least that are supporting this presentation I'm making and the type of landscaping that is, I hope we can talk about. You'll remember, I've made some notes, I think I got it right, that the existing or the new plantings in that area in the center that I circled are only going to be three to four feet in height at the beginning and four to eight feet. They hardly even approach the bottom of those big windows. Some much taller trees spread out in some way, not deciduous trees, evergreen trees are really needed in that area. I mean, if you looked at what Donna did with the pole, fully the entire area of this room out into the hall at that level is how big these windows are. Those are incredible. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else would like to speak? Yeah, please come up.
Thank you. Ken Johnson, 16 Leward, to all you present and those one who's on Zoom. I'm going to try to get to the bottom of this in a very simple way, which is unusual for me. But Don mentioned, you know, do we have any regulations on inside control of lighting, et cetera? The answer is no, the, appropriately so. But that's why this is so important. I think you raised a good question and that's why we're spending so much time on this. I'd like to thank the applicants. They're on Zoom. We've tried to work with them. They've been very cooperative. I think it was a good design to remove the second story. It allowed people to consider granting 800 feet over the 4,000 feet regulation. I think things are going in the right direction. I think we're close to the gold line. But we have a very sensitive, important part of the lighting because of the 585 square feet of glass, 13 feet high, which was demonstrated. The three sliders on the north side make up 26 feet. Across the two sliders on the left side, there's an eighth of an inch short of 13 feet, make up 19 feet. So that comes to 45 times 13, and that's how we get to the 585. But if you can see the pictures that have been shown tonight, when you look at it from our perspective at night, it's flat, even though it is an L shape. And that light comes into us directly. I don't have a real solution. We're counting on you to kind of put up a, you know, a flag here. And if you're inclined to improve the project, I do believe there are more study has to be done on the landscape. Because they talk about number of trees, but there's none in this area in which the problem exists. Also, one last point, the area where that shrub or whatever you want to call it start is below the actual floor of the great room. So if you're putting a three foot plant or shrub or whatever it is there, it's going to be almost 12 to 18 inches below because you're starting at a lower level. And if you look at the pictures that were photoshopped, that were submitted, that one was, they're dropped in, that's not realistic. We need a real commitment. These are good neighbors. What if somebody else buys the house that's not a good neighbor? So that's my pitch. I really appreciate if the planning commissioners would give a lot of thought to this and condition whatever decisions are made upon improving this situation. So the pollution of light is mitigated. It's a problem on the lagoon. If we set these precedents, it's just going to continue. So it's very, very important and I appreciate your time and thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Sean Plummer. I'm at 28 Davy, where we live with my wife and three kids. Like everybody else, I want to say thank you to the entire community for the work that's gone into this. It feels productive and going right, the right manner. However, we still have some concerns from our property. From our perspective, and there are some photos there, and we can address the 16% change as well. But from our perspective, our current primary views are trees, shrubs and log go. And again, we sit at 28 Davy, so we're one street removed and elevated above the property. The proposed plans would have us overlooking a very tall imposing fence, a tall garage, both from the street level and from our property. Continue on the north side of the property, our line of sight would then be of the roof of the garage, the roof of the bedrooms, and to our understanding with solar panels. Then a solid wall that would be for the elevated great room, which also doesn't have any windows on it. Then the flat roof of the kitchen or great room and the corresponding pipes and exhausts for that structure. The continuous line of browns and grays will replace our current view of trees and lagoon. We would ask that it gets broken up. My understanding from tonight is that there'll be a roof surface being put on and no longer pebbles. I think the pebbles would help to break up that, that our vantage point. Our concern is couple fold. According to the Belvedere City website, the application for an acceptance of floor requirements must pass four finances, has been stated earlier tonight. The first dates the primary views from the adjacent properties as well as the street are not significantly impaired by the additional square footage. While we are not a bordering property, we are directly over the the project and within about 100 feet of the property lines. The removal of the second story on the south side of the property is more in keeping with the neighborhood. And we no longer have an issue with privacy concerns as we did in August. But we are cognizant of the fact there is still a so we, we feel that great room is higher than it needs to be. Request dropping the ceiling height. That would decrease the total floor area and also help with our primary views. While the proposed plan shows, and this is with regards to greenery, while the proposed plan shows full grown trees covering the fence courtyard, we don't see them being at their mature height for at least five to 10 years. Planting mature trees, which is proposed on the sides of the property, in the front of the property would be helpful as we go through the construction process and also as it begins to break up the large fence that Nana had talked about earlier. These two concerns really all boil down to one thing, which is our property value. We bought our home in May of this year. And it's, I think, a factual statement that most properties, be it in Belvedere or anywhere else, water views will increase the value of your property. The removal of our water views will decrease the value of our property. And that is something that we hold paramount. So we would ask that the council consider lowering the height of the great room, put it in more senior or more mature trees. And we think that will help with the project. With the time I don't have, I did want to address one thing with regards to the question on 16% increase in view. So two components there. One is we're losing our entire left side of our view, if you see from the picture. The other piece where they're picking up this additional 16 feet or 16%, that's the deciduous trees. In the winter time, we'll have full views of the bay. In the summertime, obviously, we'll have shade. So it is a, it's not entirely accurate state to say that we'll have more of a view than we currently have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Marshall Lasky at 12 Pelican Point in Belvedere. I just wanted to make a quick point about, I would recommend a condition of approval that the cedar tree will be protected during construction. We've had a lot of problems with that in the past. And it does state that it will not be impacted by the construction in your documents and your so I want to be sure that's done. And it also was concerning to me to see the ADU on the plan so close to the cedar tree. It's just something eventually when you, when you apply to that, I think it needs to be moved back a bit and/or made smaller because it does look like it will impact the roots of the trees. That's all I think. And as I mentioned in my letter, I think a lot of improvements from me with this plan, particularly taking the second story out. I think it was a real consideration for the neighbors to increase their privacy. So I think that was very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Okay. Can, can the applicants speak again? Applicants representative?
If they had reserved time remaining, they could do that. But of course, if the commission has questions for the applicant, the chair could call them back to the podium.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I do. I was wondering if the Burgs would respond to the idea that several of the speakers brought up about putting more major planting in the center, whether you'd be open to that. I think it'd be helpful for us to just get your viewpoint on that before we go on with our discussion.
If I could just interrupt for one second, just to let you know that there is no one on Zoom with their hands raised. Thank you. In terms of comments. Thank you.
Do you want me to respond to that question? I guess, you know, we'll go back and take a look at it. Obviously, anything that blocks their view of our windows will block our view of the lagoon. So there's a trade off. And what I don't want is conditional agreement to something that we have to work out with the Parquets because the Parquets never had a conversation with us before they submitted the letter. So I just, you know, we'll go back and take a look at it and see if there's a way you know, we'll go back and take a look at it and see if there's a way to provide more coverage. But I don't want to be blocking our views, which I think is inferred by anything that would you know, block their view of the glass. The other thing I would say is we will have blinds in this house, and I have no desire to be publicly displaying ourselves to the neighborhood in the evening. We're we're, you know, at Stark here in Boston where we are right now. And our shades have been down since 3:30 this afternoon. And so, you know, when it gets dark and the lights go on in the house, the shades will go down. And we have no more desire of them seeing us than they do in in the evening. So I don't think you have to worry about that. The other thing is, you know, our house is set way far back from the water. I think we've got a picture of the Parque's house at night. They sit almost on the water, and they've got a lot of glass and a lot of light reflecting off of the off of the lagoon as well. And it's two floors. So I I think we're really into the weeds here, honestly. And we'll we'll go back and take a look. I'm not saying we won't, but I don't want to commit to something, and I don't want conditional approval where ultimately the Parqueses have veto rights over anything that we do.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Chip covered that.
I would just add interject one point, which is that the as was acknowledged by the applicant's team, the landscaping plan is not set in stone by anything the commission has in front of it tonight. The chair will ultimately work with planning staff who were and the developers team to come up with an acceptable landscape plan. So there won't be a veto from the neighbor, but there is you do you will need approval from the planning chair.
Yeah, and I would add just for the commission that we reserve the right to condition an approval based on what we've heard tonight from neighbors, the various concerns, and also having studied the plans to ensure that the landscaping plan is doing what it should be doing. What's outlined in the code. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Before we close public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom?
I think I have a question just because it looks like you were about to talk about glazing. I know you had you had all of the glazing examples up there. I mean, one of the things that I think is difficult is that how much is too much and how much is out of character for the neighborhood? And I don't think we have the data to guide us on that in a very clear way. I mean, I'd be I I know you shared this with us in the first meeting or the first time that project came. I think it'd be helpful to hear again, at least your perspective in terms of how the glazing that is currently reflect, well, it's now reduced since the last time. But how does that compare to what you believe exists within the community or the lagoon community, if you will?
Do sorry, just a point of clarification. Do we need to officially close public comment? And or is this considered part of public comment?
This would be part of public comment, but it would be basically a part reserved for answering questions from the DIAS.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Kevin, for the question about glazing. As you could see, you know, we've done kind of extensive reconnaissance around the the immediate lagoons. So we haven't gone past really what we can see. But you could see several examples. You know, whether it's the top two photographs, for example. Again, maybe you can argue that there's mountains that divide the glass, but it's basically floor to ceiling glass. So there's definitely very many precedents about that. As Chip noted, you know, the the neighbors on Lord also have some very similar conditions where, you know, they are just as exposed. And I'm sure Chip and Juliet would not want to see that. This is our view here in the in the bottom. So I think if you just visually compare kind of our design to the others, I would argue that it's very contextual. Again, the requirement for glazing is per the general policy 15.6.3 number eight, which says that extensive glazing, and I'll kind of paraphrase, but it says that extensive glazing has to be mitigated with some tools. And those tools are landscaping, which obviously we've spoken at length about. Architectural features, which we really haven't covered, but that includes the roof overhang and the wall extensions. If you can say, okay, roof or, you know, motorized shades are another architectural feature that will help, you know, reduce light or light pollution when those shades are down. And I think in the conversation about landscaping, what isn't, you know, it's really hard to quantify. But you could see here, like David's house is literally right on the edge of the water. If I can ask you to, again, just kind of remember that our house, especially the area that is visible, the great room windows that we're specifically talking about, those windows are way set back from the edge of the water. So regardless of specific plants, and we can certainly, you know, work with staff and chair to come up with an appropriate landscaping plan, we have the space for the landscaping. And again, I think that that distance from the lagoon is extremely valuable. I think there's one more slide. I I did. Oh, yeah. Want to note that there was a a comment about, you know, again, kind of the visibility of our house from Lord. And then this is more of a representation from inside the house of what is actually seen. So again, if I know you, we've been looking at the night renderings for a while and really studying those. I'd ask you to just understand that those are taken from the rear yard and are very focused into the structure. If you look at the the image on the right, that's what actually the neighbors on board will see from inside their home from primary spaces. And I I would argue that, you know, the the visual impact, at least on the day, is very insignificant.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, just add one one last point to talk about this top left. Just also want to point out that the face of this large glazing sliding door on 12 Leeward and our main glazing at the great room is about 300 feet, so about a football field, just to put things into perspective.
Thank you. Kevin, did you have any more questions while we have them? No? Okay. Anyone else while we have them up here? Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay. So we can close public comment now? Okay. Okay. I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Kevin, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for thanks to staff for a very comprehensive review and report and to the applicant for their presentation and also the community for your your comments and your concerns. I do want to acknowledge, and I think a number of people have done this as well from the community, that the applicant has made quite a number of changes to the project, which I think moves it in the right direction and addresses or attempts to address the concerns that the neighboring residents have voiced, either in our last meeting or in interactions directly with the applicant. And so I appreciate that. I do feel in one, I take the easy one. So I think the cedar tree, I think that it's clear that there's things that we can do to protect the cedar tree. I do think that there are things that are already planned to provide appropriate screening in that one corner next to the master bedroom. I I do think that, you know, screening along the property lines is is going to be more than sufficient. I think there's still some issues with the views for both 328 and 28 Bayview, so 328 San Rafael and 28 Bayview. I'm not sure whether we can resolve those. I think those are going to be a matter of debate. And, you know, I'd like to hear what the other commissioners say before I weigh in on either of those. But to me, those are I'm I'm sort of on the fence on on both of those. I think where I'm not on the fence is I still think there's an issue with the glazing as it relates to the backyard. And I think we may need more information. I think it's it's really hard to say, well, you know, is 13 too high? Is is 11 too high? Is 11 and a half too high? Is 42 long? And we should collect the data from the neighboring buildings and use that as a benchmark. And, you know, is this indexing at 150% versus the average? Is it indexing at 90, 105? I mean, whatever it might be. I think we could use some tools here to make a more informed judgment about whether this glazing is too much or acceptable. So I would say that's one piece. And the other would be I'm not comfortable just kicking the landscaping thing down the road. I don't know if we can make it a contingency or require that they come back with a solution. The applicant, I think, was very gracious in saying they would explore it. But I don't think it would be very comfortable for either the applicant or the residents or the neighbors to just say, well, at some point, that's going to be decided where there's no real public discourse or opportunity to to view it. So if landscaping is a way to to address that or potentially address it, I wonder if we can require that it come back to a public forum.
Well, can I can I say something? So if you have specific concerns about landscaping, I think it's very reasonable to condition an approval on certain additions tonight. So if there's specific areas or places where you think more work is needed, you can condition that.
True. Yeah. And I know, and we've done that in the past, but I think what's different here is so we can say, well, we condition it on additional screening in front of the great room. But so that will be something that's submitted to you for approval, and the neighbors would have no opportunity to weigh in on it. I know I know the applicant doesn't want the the neighbors to decide that, nor do I think they should decide it. But I think, you know, what's going to provide appropriate screening or what wouldn't?
Well, I I think that there's no reason why a a landscape plan can't can't come in and be shared with the potentially impacted neighbors. I think that happens frequently. So that's one thing. And I think that if we condition a landscape approval, we can specifically speak to trees of a certain height that will screen some of that window. So something to think about. I think tree, large trees back there would go a long way. Never mind.
Yeah. So I I guess I'd like to hear what the other commissioners have to say. But I'm still my sticking point is really around the glazing. And you know, whether or not we have a sufficient benchmark to determine whether it's excessive or not. And and if we decide that it needs to be screened, you know, what's the process to ensure that we do that in a way that satisfies both the applicant and the neighbors?
Thank you. Alex?
Thank you. Going back to some of my comments from the previous hearing, I think one of the things I talked about was how the the disposition of the building went right out to the four corners of the lot. It seemed to be sort of pressuring the edges a little bit in views and so forth. There's a portion of the report here that sort of enumerates a number of reductions that have been made around the site. And it's kind of interesting because at face value, no one reduction sounds like a huge thing. It's one foot here, two feet there, four feet here. But in my review on site, in tandem with removing the second story, I think it's made a very significant difference in how the house settles, to use that word again, into the neighborhood. So I'm I'm I think that the design team and the owner have been very responsive to some of the comments that I provided in the last meeting. Regarding the the views, and I could sort of take each of the two close by properties. The plumbers were kind enough to let me visit their site while they were at a ballgame over the weekend. And I appreciate that. What occurs to me, a couple of things that I actually think with the house being now one story and kind of open in the middle with the courtyard and only that small link, I think it's not a bad approach in terms of what you might be seeing from your property. I think there could be other designs for this piece of property, more conventional, you know, not kind of spread apart with the courtyard in the middle that they could have blocked considerably more of the water view from your property. So I'm just talking from my viewpoint of what I saw. And, you know, you you may feel a little differently. But I think when all is said and done, the landscaping is going to be very nice. The trees are going to come up. I think it's a reasonable approach for the uphill neighbors. So that's how I kind of view it from that piece of property. I've visited the Lycases several times. And there's a modest, well, of course, removing the second story is, I think, a significant help for their property. And there is a modest improvement with, you know, height reductions and and so forth. Where I I finally settle on that one is I think that the majority of your primary view is preserved straight ahead. You're looking at the ridge line in Tiburon. It the bedroom wing will eliminate sort of part of the trailing view off to the northwest. But from my standpoint, I I have a hard time finding that significant. And I think that's what the the code reads, is it has to be a significant blockage. So I think the majority of the view from the Lycas property will still be intact. So I'm comfortable with the design from that standpoint at this time. I I've given considerable thought and talked to the neighbors about the size of the windows and the light. This is probably the more difficult one, and I may end up being a little bit of an outlier on this. I I think there are a number of houses on the lagoon, and they mainly date from earlier times, the 60s and 70s. And not all of them are even shown in the exhibit that Federigo had, but that have the majority, if not the entire facade in glass. I actually personally, I don't have a problem with those houses. It's a it's a design style. Like I say, it was perhaps more prevalent in a previous time. And I I do agree with a point that Fed made that the setback of having, I don't know, 75 or 7800 square feet of landscape in front of the house is going to be in itself a significant reduction of the impact of the glazing. Now, having said that, I appreciate the fact that the owner is, you know, willing to be a little bit flexible on the landscaping there. I imagine there may be some idea of conditioning on the landscape. And I would encourage, you know, all the parties to remain open to that. But it, you know, without the concerns of the neighbors, I I would be willing to make findings on the design the way it is. So we'll hear what the rest of the commission has to say on that subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna?
Hi, everyone. So from my perspective, I'm gonna I'm gonna echo what what both Alex and Kevin have have said in certain in certain parts. And I just want to want to walk through the the four the four findings. The first is that primary views from adjacent properties and from the street are not significantly impaired by the additional square footage. And on this point, I agree with Alex that And on this point, I agree with Alex that with the changes that have been, that have been made by the applicant and their architects, that I think that the primary views are no longer significantly impaired. I agree that the reduction of the height of the great room and the elimination of, sorry, of the second story off, office, as well as the balcony go, go a very, a very, a very long way. In addition, having the screening hedges along either side of, of the property, I think also go to screen, screen the, screen the building from the, from the adjacent neighbors. As to finding number two, I do believe that the large lot and the shape of the lot with the, with the point extending into, into the lagoon as opposed to a, to a more, a more flat bulkhead is an unusual characteristic that's applicable to the parcel that would minimize the impact of the greater floor area. I also believe that the, that the moving of the mass of the, of the house back towards the street and away from the lagoon would mitigate the impact that the house would have. I'm not talking about glazing or light, just the impact the house itself would have on the lagoon neighbors. Number three, the proposed structure is appropriate in mass bulk and character for the parcel, the neighborhood in the zoning district and meets all design review criteria. You know, as, as we've said, this is one of the largest parcels on the lagoon. So while, while this house is going to be actually not quite as large as the house that is there now and is consistent with one, with one of its neighbors, it is going to be one of the largest houses in the, in the, in the direct area. But not if you take into account some of the houses that are on peninsula, which are just, just right, right across the way. I do think that the splitting of the house into, into, into different pods, sure, that's not the right architectural term, does serve to minimize, to minimize the bulk. And I believe that the, that the change in the different, the different materials that are used from the limestone to the more rugged stone and the, and the wood serves to, serves to break, to break up the, the, the building and be more attractive in general. And the last is that the additional square footage will not substantially reduce the privacy otherwise available to the residents of the adjoining properties. And this, this is the, this is the only one that I, that I stick on a bit. Once again, I think the, the reduction in reduction in height of the great room and the elimination of the second story goes a long way to mitigating the privacy concerns that the lycases have. There's not going to be anyone who can, can see down into their yard now as it's going to be one story on that, on that side. And I do think that, that we do need to have a condition for the landscaping for the large expanses of glass on, on the, on the lagoon side, both to protect the, the Bergs' privacy, but also, but also the, also the privacy of their neighbors on the lagoon. Being a hill dweller, I enjoy a great deal of, of privacy. I can't see my neighbors and they can't see me. It's lovely. And I understand that living on the lagoon is different. And it's, and so you need to guard the privacy that you do have. And so I would be in favor of including a, a condition that the landscaping plan be revisited as to the placement of trees and the, and the selection of, of, of landscaping on the lagoon side of the property in order to maximize within reason the privacy for both the Bergs and their lagoon neighbors.
All right.
Thank you.
Pat?
So I agree with many things that my fellow commissioners have said. I feel first off, that the applicant and the team really did listen to the community. And I think in my almost ten years on this commission, have never seen anyone give up a second story. And I think that's a huge give by the Bergs to give that up to try and work with the neighbors. I can make the findings for the design review and the floor area exception. I do feel that there should be some conditions on the approval. One, I would like to make sure that the lights down by the water are faced towards the home and not towards the water. I definitely want to see some trees or some, I think it has to be trees. And I mean, I, I understand the Bergs, they don't want to lose their view. No one wants to lose their view of the water. That's why you pay the money for the homes on the lagoon. But I have seen a plan where you see the water and for what the neighbors on Leward are asking for, it blocks the light. So it'll be above, the trunk will be up so they can see out, but the, the crown will be the thing that, that does it. So there definitely has to be some additional plantings in the back of condition. And with that being said, I know, I took final landscape plans very seriously, as Sammy can attest. And Sammy has gotten very good at, when he gives the chair the final landscape to include any conditions that were included in the, in the approval. So, and I know Ashley takes her, her job and her concern about vegetation, trees and plantings very seriously as I have. And so I know that she will be very diligent in making sure that the goals are achieved for the neighbors on Leward. I've had conversations with Brian Van Son, our building inspector, and we've talked about the Lutron system. And I'm, I'm, I'm not going to say what he says it should be, but I would like to have a condition that the building inspector, head inspector, yeah, determines what the Lutron should be set at. And let's see, can't read my handwriting. Oh, and I voice Marsha Lasky and everyone else's concern about a tree protection for the Cypress tree. And to just address some of the neighbors' concern, I, I think almost from the time I started on this commission, I've seen glazing increase on the lagoon to the point at where we're at right now. And this is a one-story house, so I hate to say it, it could be worse. And and I think one of the solutions that we've really found that works is having vegetation, trees blocking the view to soften that light and kind of absorb some of that light at night. So I think that, I think we can find a solution that people can live with. Everybody gives and takes, so everyone's gonna benefit from it in some form or fashion. To address the lycases, I'd like to say that I agree with what Commissioner Seidel said. I think your primary view, you are having some of your view taken away, but it's pretty much just houses on the hill and I don't think that's your primary view. And I think that the give the owner gave you by removing that second story is huge. As far as the plumbers up on twenty-eight Bay View, I'm familiar with the property and I think that there's been some tree trimming that's gone on, that's improved the view. So I don't know if that was the view you had when you purchased the property, which is one of the criterias we have. So, and I, I think that you actually will have more lagoon water view with this new plan. So that being said, I can make all the findings with those conditions.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, thank you. I won't repeat much of what's been said here. I do believe in the condition of certainly protecting the cedar during construction. And maybe I'm conflicted about the, the impact on the adjacent neighbor at three twenty-eight. While I, you know, I realize that the view being impacted is not the quote, "primary view" by the definition. But that's, it's, let's just say that's a little bit of a jump ball for me. Whether that's a primary view or not, I will say that it's primary adjacent view. I'm not going to hold up my endorsement of the findings based on that, but I am saying it's, it's close. I sat there and looked at it. I might do the same as the folks at three twenty-eight. If I lived at three twenty-eight, I wouldn't necessarily expect to win, but, but there is an impact there. To the, to the heart of the matter regarding the glazing in the back, overall, I think, I, I love the landscape plan. I think it's terrific for throughout the property. I love all the use of the natives, although we're not really talking about the courtyard here because there's no external impact there. I love how you've broken up the space there and did to some oval shapes. I think that adds a, makes, creates a warmer feeling overall to the project. Regarding the, the plantings in the back, where I land on this is I'm happy to stipulate that there are indeed a lot of houses around the lagoon, lagoon that, where essentially is a, a wall of glass, then there's a deck and it comes right to the water. And yet, at the same time, I can also see the challenge, like Commissioner Burke, I would like there possibly to be some other way to evaluate these things other than just, you know, square footage on glass. Or, you know, do we believe this person's rendering where they used a zoom lens versus this person's where they used a wide angle? And how does that relate to the overall perspective? I'm not, I don't know how to solve that one. Certainly, I know it's not just square footage of, of glass. It, all that depends on context and how much that square foot occupies of any single other person's view, you know, both degrees this way and degrees this way and the light that emanates from there. I don't know quite how to solve that. I know it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to solve it on, try to solve it on any particular project. However, I, for the applicant, I would say that I would leave yourself open to the idea of planting a tree or two in that center section of the back. It's my personal belief that a framed view is actually far superior to one that's just wide open. And so just leave open to your, the fact that that might actually be better for you to and increase your enjoyment of the property as well. So with that, I, I'm inclined to make the findings before, before we get there with the condition on, on protecting the tree in the front. And I certainly don't object, would not object to conditions being put on the landscaping in the back, but I'm not going to propose those.
Thank you. So I think I agree with much of what has been said tonight. I think this is a really good example of an applicant that's really listened to feedback and made a project much better. There were elements of the first design that were very good, that are still very good. But now that the home has been reduced in size, you're really able to appreciate the beauty of the design much more. The brawn and the bulk doesn't get in the way. And I think this is a perfect example of bigger is not always better. I think the changes to the facade of the home are really great. It sort of communicates a certain joining with and participation in the, in the neighborhood, in the communal shared space of the street. And it's much more welcoming and cohesive with the neighborhood. I also echo that just appreciate the removal of the second story, the increased setbacks. I think that's got a long way to, to addressing the neighbor comments from last time around. I think that the biggest issue here is that back corner. So it's the back corner on the lagoon has been discussed at length tonight. I would like to see a further reduction in the amount of glass there in that corner. I, I think it's five hundred plus square feet of glass is, is still quite a bit. And even just a little bit less would go a long way. I would also like to see some trees back there. I think you said you've got seventy-four hundred square feet, which is basically a whole house. So you have plenty of room and a lot of the plantings back there are very low to the ground. And I think that having some variety in the height and, as Pat mentioned, planting trees will not obstruct the view if they're the right kind of tree and the crown is in the right place and the right height. So I would like to see many more trees back there. And I also think that we do need a very good tree protection plan in place for the cedar and then just assurances that the ADU is going to be pulled back far enough such that the roots are not impaired. Otherwise, I, I think it's, these changes are really good. So I think that I can make the findings for design review. I would condition it with the addition of the trees at the back and then a reduction in the great room glass. Now, I don't know if I have support for that, if that's something we want to discuss. If anyone else feels like that's something that they can support, then we can add that as a condition of approval. Yes, please.
So, yeah, I'm going back to the glazing. I'm just struggling with the idea of asking somebody to put a lot of trees in front of their view. I think, I mean, we all know, we cherish our views here. And I think if you look around the lagoon, I don't, I mean, Pat, you've been on the commission for a long time. I mean, have we ever asked anyone to plant a tree smack dab in front of their view on the lagoon? We have.
Yes, we have. And we have some witnesses here to, who agree with me.
Interesting. I'd be interested to see those examples. Again, I, I don't think that, I personally don't have the data to know whether or not that glazing is too much or just right. And, you know, I think without that, I think we're pushing them to, you know, put a lot of trees in front of their view, which just, I struggle with that. So, I mean, I think it's, is would the applicant prefer to put trees back there or to go back and revisit glazing? Although I guess you're asking for both, Ashley, right?
I, I would like to see both. I think I was asking the commission if I have support on reducing the amount of glazing. I may not. But it sounds like there is some consensus about adjusting the landscape plan in the back such that you're not obstructing views, but you are screening some of the light that's coming from the home.
So I would have a, oh, sorry.
I had a thought that typically we say, you know, the final landscape plan has to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission Chair and the Director of Planning and Building prior to issuance of building permit. I think in this project, this is just something to think about. This one seems a little more nuanced in that, you know, the, the building wall is not right at the water. It's at an angle. There are homes at an angle that are sort of, you know, trying to figure out how this glazing is going to impact their privacy, that we could condition it something along the lines of, you know, preliminary landscape plan has to be submitted and approved prior to issuance of building. preliminary landscape plan has to be submitted and approved prior to issuance of building permit. But the final landscape plan, once the walls are in and the windows are in, I think would really help. It sounds like the landscape architect is really willing to work with the neighbors and say, okay, what if we put the tree here? What if we put these bushes here? You know, and sort of work that way and have the landscape plan, the final landscape plan approved prior to final of building permit or something like that. Because this, you know, this one is a little bit different. It's just a thought and you can disagree.
So it would get, it would get essentially two more reviews is what you're saying? Yeah. Okay. I mean, I think that's reasonable. And there would be opportunity at the second, or I'm sorry, at the, the next review for, for neighbors to actually see what it's going to look like.
Own involve the neighbors and have them have, be able to veto a landscape.
No, no. Yeah, I understand.
And so we wouldn't share it with them.
But as a courtesy.
Given this feedback, I think the majority of the landscape work will happen at the preliminary landscape plan and have, prior to issuance of building permit. And then if it needs to be tweaked a little bit, it could be something that happens sort of at the final, right? Which I guess we would do anyways through an exemption or something. So just that it's not set in stone when we issue the building permit.
Can I, I mean, should we ask the applicant if they'd rather go back and rethink the glazing versus have trees in front of the glazing? I mean, because there's two options. They could go back and revisit the, the amount of glazing because we have approved many homes without trees in front of the views. Or would they prefer to go the landscaping route?
I think that they need both. I mean, I think.
So I had a question for the applicant. So I learned from some wise people who I used to serve with, not that, no one here is not wise, but wise people, that I was ready to veto a project and I was convinced by this statement. And so the question I have for the applicant is how does that affect the design? Because you have to balance the design. You know, you know, you have a design. So if you reduce the glazing, does that affect the design? Or is it something that you can incorporate into the design? Because the last thing you want is not a good design.
Yeah, I'm, my, my quick react, I mean, I, I'd like to be able to talk with my team about this before giving a final answer. But, you know, my, 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 my instinct is reducing the glazing. And first of all, let's remember, we've reduced the glazing by 23% already versus what you saw in August. On just that, that one, that one side of the house. So already a very significant reduction. But to, to take it down much further, I think we go back into architectural design work. And, you know, I don't think it's just take out a panel of glass. It's going to change, it's going to change the design of the house on that, on that particular facing. So I think we go back to the drawing board, literally. And we've been at the drawing board now for about six months. And I, I'm really reluctant to wanting to do that. I'm, and you know, I, I am very open to going back and working landscaping plan and looking at trees. And, you know, and working that with the landscape architects, I'm open to looking at that. But I think going back and taking another hard look at further reduction in glazing, when I think, when you consider the magnitude of the property that we've, we're dealing with here, the amount of frontage on the lagoon, the amount of space between the building and the water, which is the equivalent of some lots on the lagoon. That's how far back the house is. I, I think the concern about the reflection on the lagoon and, and light pollution is way overblown. And so I actually liked Rebecca's comment about, let's, let's take the landscape in two pieces. Let's wait till walls are built and we can actually see on site how much space there is and, and we can finalize the landscape plan then. I'm open to trees. And, and, you know, and, and we can figure that out. But to go back and redo glazing, we're back in design land. And, and we've been at it for a while and I'm happy to show you the bills if you're interested. I don't want to keep going into design land. This is like a continuous loop.
We would appreciate the design first.
I'm sorry, didn't hear what she said. Did you? So can I hear from, thank you very much for your comment. May I hear from the architect?
Absolutely, Pat. Thank you for the question, Chip. I think Chip covered it. I would just add, going to your question about how much work it is to redesign something like the, you know, the windows on the house. It's taken us three months to make the changes from the first hearing. And that's not because of lack of effort or lack of working. It's just takes a long time to get all these conditions figured out, right? So your question is, it, yeah, can we just, you know, arbitrarily reduce windows like five or 10%? That would definitely take us back to the drawing board.
Thank you.
We have a member in the public who would like to speak. Can we open?
Open the public hearing if you'd like.
Okay, okay. Please, I will open public comment. Did you have a comment?
Yeah.
Can you come up to the microphone?
In fairness to the, the applicant, pushing this down to the final is really going to be a hardship because it's going to tie the applicant's hands. You have drainage going in, you've got water, you've got all these plants. So I would like the landscape issue for everybody's sake, even though it might be more difficult to be decided on sooner rather than later. Because you're talking about grading, you're talking about where the cement is, you're talking about stairs. That's just my comment. I think it would be fairer to everybody because you have more ability to look at it in a clean slate as opposed to have a temporary landscape plan installed except for the plants and then talk about what plants go in. And when you're talking about it, the final, you're talking about way, way down on the construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to the commission. So I appreciate the, the detail on the glazing. I think after having heard that, I certainly don't want to push you back to, to step zero or step five. I think that Rebecca's solution is a really good one. So I would support that. And with that, can I please get a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution granting design review to construct a 4,800 square foot, single-family residence and attached garage at 322 San Rafael Avenue.
With, with conditions.
With the conditions that were stated and you have that all written down, right?
With the condition that lights on the water will face toward the home and not the lagoon, that additional trees and, and plantings will be added. That the building inspector will determine the Lutron system setting. If one is going to be used, a tree protection plan for the cedar tree. And yeah, just additional trees in the back and then the one that Rebecca said.
I don't think we should say specifically trees or shrubs.
Okay.
We should need to just say preliminary landscape plan.
Right.
Prior to issuance of building permit, a comprehensive preliminary landscape plan prior to issuance of building permit. And the final landscape plan prior to planning file, final, which will stop the construction time limit.
Just to clarify again, they must have approval by staff and the chair of the final landscape plan before they can final out their building permit and obtain the condition of, make certificate of occupancy.
Yep.
Okay.
But I, I think you need to state that it's to, for what purpose? Mitigating whatever it is, is we're attempting to mitigate.
Light pollution on the lagoon, I believe, is the form of concern.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adopt the resolution granting demolition permit to demolish the existing 5,450 square foot residence at 322 San Rafael.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adopt the resolution granting exception to total floor area to allow 4,800 square feet where 4,000 square feet is permitted and 5,450 square feet exist at 322 San Rafael Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recommend to the city council approval of a revocable license for improvements located in the public street right of way at 322 San Rafael Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you and congratulations to the applicant.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
But yes, I, I have had my drive home at 2:30 or 3:00 in the morning. They have two more things to do. Yes.
Where were you?
I don't expect to be home anytime soon. I fed the cat and dog.
For how long were you there? Just for fun?
It was, they said you've come a long way. It's like my dad, he entered in the middle of a firestorm.
Good luck.
I mean, I work at night. That's just my.
Yeah. It's a great. So where'd you go? Where'd you go in Italy out? I got, I got to a Mexico City last night. Yeah, it's my first trip too, just for a wedding. You know, obviously great food. Yeah. Interesting place. I have no idea how it all hangs together. I'm not sure it does. From Mexico City? Yeah. What happened? What happened to that civilization? Yeah. No, we went and then we went up to the north about three or four hours to the town of San Diego. A lot of the, you know, a lot of guys in Jeeps or guns and, you know, military, national police, state police, local police, gosh knows who else. I'm sure it was mostly for show. But again, it was kind of like, okay, well, let's put still edge on everything. Yours is going to take just as long. Don't worry. I don't know if they care. They're out of here.
We normally don't have refreshments. We should have refreshments. Makes people happy.
You're welcome. Okay, um, I'd like to open the public hearing for 218 Bayview Avenue and ask for staff reports.
Thank you again, Chair Johnson and members of the planning commission. Your consideration is an application for design review and exception to total floor area at 218 Bayview. The site is a 6,250 square foot parcel that slopes east towards Belvedere Cove. The property is currently undergoing construction of a new single-family dwelling. The property is adjacent to single-family homes to the north, south and west and the San Francisco Yacht Club to the east. On April 18th, 2017, the planning commission granted design review exception to total floor area and variance to construct a new 3,471 square foot, single-family dwelling. After multiple design review approval extensions, a building permit was issued on May 10th, 2023 to construct the new residence per the approved 2017 plans. This application proposes to enclose the approved 98 square foot trellis on the left side of the residence and to conditioned living area. The enclosed living area would include a new pitched metal roof and a five foot by eight foot window. The project also proposes exterior color and material changes from the approved plans. Changes include new black stainless steel guardrails with glass panels at the rear decks, board and bed and siding in a linen white color, wood steps along both side yards, concrete shingle siding in James Hardy Navajo beige, and arctic white trim at the roof fascia, windows and doors. The entry pillar and the roof would also be upgraded with limestone. The roof would be made of dark bronze metal. The applicant requests an exception to total floor area to allow 3,569 square feet where 3,471 square feet exists. The additional 98 square feet would be the result of converting the existing trellis into conditioned living area. Staff recommends that the exception to total, total air floor area findings can be made. Primary views and privacy would not be substantially reduced by the additional floor area as the structure is out of sight lines from the adjacent neighbors and the street. The steep slope is an unusual characteristic of the site that minimizes the greater floor area. And this structure is appropriate in mass and bulk as it is set lower than and within the existing residences facade. The project is exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the draft resolution, staff finds the addition to comply with the zoning ordinance and general plan policies and recommends approval. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff or members of the commission? Okay, seeing none. Now, we'd like to invite the applicant up to speak about their project. If you'd like.
I don't have anything to say, but just want to thank you. Good evening, Commissioner, and good evening to the planning review committee. I want to thank you, Sammy, working very hard to put the project together to be able to present to the commissioner. And I want to thank you, Pat, Dawn, and Ashley, Kevin, and Jenna have come out to my home and, and be able to take a look at the project that I've been done so far. And you're welcome. And I'm so looking forward to moving here when the project is done. So thank you for that. And I hope we can get this approved so we can be able to finish how the non-time because we've been 18 months already. And then we did get to the framing state because we have multiple delay in, you know, some are optical that we have, so delay our project. So hopefully this will make us moving forward with the time that we have on films right now. We have like five months left to finish the project. Hopefully we can get that done on time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Are there any on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom with their hands raised.
Okay, so we will close public comment. So I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. See here. Alex, would you like to kick us off?
Sure, thank you. I think that the proposal is fine. And I, I don't have too much more to say than that, but I'll be able to make the findings in favor.
Thank you. Jenna?
I too will be, will be able to make, to make the findings. I actually think that the enclosure of, of the pergola is a really, really great architectural and sort of neighborly move. First of all, it, it takes the front door from, from facing their neighbor to, to face, to face, facing the street. And so I view this as a, as a, as a net positive for the, for both the design and for the, of the community.
Thank you. Pat?
Yes, so I visited the site, met Mr. Phan, and I have to say it's one of the easiest site visits I've had because everything was there to see. So I can make all the findings for design review and exception to total floor area. I think it's a good improvement.
Thank you. Dawn?
Thank you. I'm happy to make the findings as well. Certainly appreciate your making your neighbor happy, respecting the process. Appreciate your use of hardy plank in a marine environment. I think that's great. Welcome.
Thank you. Kevin?
I can make the findings from both motions.
Thank you, and I am in agreement. I think these are really good changes. So can I please get a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution granting design review for the property located at 218 Bayview Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I move to adopt the resolution granting exception to total floor area to allow a total floor area of 3,569 square feet where 2,063 square feet is permitted and 3,471 square feet exist at 218 Bayview Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Okay. So I'd like to open the public hearing for 312 Beach and ask for a staff report.
Thank you again, Chair Johnson and members of the planning commission. For your consideration is an application for design review and variance to install floor area within the existing walls of a storage area below the garage. The subject lot is a 12,000 square foot lot located on the southeastern side of Elvedere Island. The property is developed with a single family dwelling and detached garage. The property is adjacent to single family homes to the north, south, and west, and accessible via beach road. In September 2020, a building permit was issued for interior improvements at 312 Beach Road. As the project was under construction, the applicant began exterior changes not yet approved by the planning commission. These included an addition at the rear and front of the house along with siding, window, and roof repairs. On April 20th, 2021, the planning commission granted retroactive design review for these improvements. A variance was also granted to demolish a structure within the left side yard setback and rebuild it in the same location. The applicant obtained a building permit to continue construction on the home. On January 31st, 2022, staff received a building permit application to construct a new ADU below the garage. Planning staff indicated that an ADU application was required. And on April 20th, 2022, staff granted ministerial approval for the ADU after receiving the application. On May 10th, the building permit for the ADU was put on hold by, at the applicant's request. And then on June 15th, the owner submitted a designer view exemption to repair the existing storage structure below the garage. The exemption application read, "The garage and storage requires repair and replacement of the support structure." And it included two photographs of the existing storage, the structure walls removed. However, the elevations included with the application showed that the storage structure exterior walls would be expanded and include new windows. Furthermore, the elevations included in the exemption application were consistent with the elevations approved for the ADU on April 20th, 2022. On June 17th, the exemption was signed and the structure shown in the image to the right was constructed under an existing building permit not associated with the ADU. The request before you tonight is for design review and variance to install 358 square feet of floor area within the existing storage structure underneath the street facing garage. The storage structures exterior walls stand, stand six feet, one inch from the right side property line and would not be expanded as part of this application. The applicant requests a variance to allow the existing structure to encroach into the right side yard setback. Circled in red, the section of structure was previously, is, is the section of structure previously expanded. The granting of a variance is appropriate only if the criteria under municipal code 1984010 can be met. First, the variance will not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity. Second, there are special circumstances applicable to the property which would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties if the strict application of the zoning ordinance were applied. And third, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or injurious to the property or owners of the other premises. We have one correction since the staff report was posted. While not many have been granted, variances have been issued or granted to enlarge an existing encroachment further into a setback. The adjacent neighbor at 322 Beach Road received a variance in 2007 to enclose an existing overhang into new floor area, further, furthering its encroachment within the front yard setback. Staff finds that the granting of the variance would not constitute a special privilege because other residences have been granted variances to encroach, further encroach into setbacks. However, staff cannot recommend that the special, a special circumstance applies. While the applicant wishes to further encroach into the side yard setback to provide additional floor area, the size, shape, topography, location, and surroundings of the property do not restrict the owner from adding the floor area elsewhere on the site to meet the strict application of the zoning ordinance. Floor area could be added by shifting or expanding the storage structure to the north or by construction, constructing in addition to the primary dwelling while meeting the zoning requirements. The project is exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the draft resolution, staff find the project does not comply with the zoning ordinance or general plan policies and recommends that the required findings cannot be satisfied. Thank you, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from members of the commission?
I have a couple perhaps. This is kind of an unusual application, I would say. I'm still trying to understand exactly what it's for. It seems like it's an application to install a floor. Is that basically what the application is?
It's to install the floor and the building wall was, would you say, approved in error Rebecca? The, there it's.
The variance is for the building wall that we, the city did issue a building permit for. The exemption was approved for, however, it was under the assumption when the exemption was approved that it was going to be an ADU.
And I, I got that part of it, but so set aside the, the floor, which I assume they're trying to install to make it some sort of a usable space of which I can't quite determine the purpose yet, but, but since that wall was already installed, perhaps, you know, by error, approved by the city, if they weren't trying to install the, the, the floor, I mean, is there like a thought that they might have to take, that if we don't approve the variance, would they have to take the wall away even though it was previously approved or?
The, so it's, you're, you're on the right track. It's sort of two, two separate applications, right? The design review is for the extra floor area that they're applying for. The variance is specifically for the location of the wall. And yes, if we don't approve the variance, then they would have to shift that wall to where it was originally, which was a legal non-conforming wall.
I see.
Right.
And so then my, my third question is what is this space going to be? I mean, I hear it referred, it's, it's an ADU, it's a storage space, and then somewhere I thought I read it was a guest suite. I'm, the, the floor plan is completely unlabeled. There's no specific use in the like, is it part of the interior of the house? Is it conditioned? I don't know. I just have a lot of questions about what is attempting to be accomplished here, I guess.
Questions and they, you'll have to ask the applicant because we asked the architect and he just said it's going to be floor area. So I, I can't answer that. And they're here on Zoom, so hopefully.
All right. Fair enough. I, I just note that, you know, as a planning commissioner, I'm not used to seeing plans come through with so little information on them. So that makes it, you know, harder for us, I think, all to know exactly what to do here.
Right, I, I agree.
Are there other questions?
Could you just walk through a little bit? For all of us is just, so the approval with, it was thought to be an ADU and then the building permit was issued based on the thought that it was an ADU, but we weren't certain it was an ADU. I mean, where is, can you describe the gray?
So. Yeah. They applied for the building permit for the ADU in January. Planning said you need to apply for a planning approval. Planning approved it in April of 2022. Under the assumption that it was going to be an ADU because if the ADU is that close to the side yard, it's, it's okay.
Right.
And the same planner that approved the exemption did not review the building permit. I looked at the building permit and I saw that an exemption had been approved or an elevation shows matched the elevation on the building permit. So then I said, planning has no comments on that building permit. You know, I don't know sort of what transpired between the applicant withdrawing the ADU. I wasn't here then, right? And how that exemption got approved. I know that Irene, I did talk to Irene and she said she approved it under the assumption it was going to be an ADU. It shows the elevation. It doesn't say ADU on the exemption.
But it shows the same building.
It shows the exact same elevation as it showed on that ADU. Yeah.
On the ADU application.
And I know Irene went to the site and talked to the property owner.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, it's fair to say that from the start, it was, it was always represented to staff as an ADU.
Am I going to get a chance to rebut or just wait, try to just wait? This question, this asking procedurally?
You will have a chance when the commissioners are finished asking staff questions.
Okay, thank you.
So it was represented as an ADU underneath the garage. Building permit was applied for, planning approval was applied for. And then somewhere in the span of that 30 or 60 days, the permit was put on hold and then this exemption was requested. So it was kind of like two, these two things were happening, kind of overlapping. And the exemption was approved because we had information that said that this person is going to put an ADU beneath the garage via the building permit application and the, the planning application.
Again, I wasn't here, so that's my understanding of it. I know that there was also some discussion between Irene and the property owner about the structural integrity of the space under the garage. Which parlayed into that exemption. If you read what it says on the exemption, it says sort of structural fixing of, you know, the, the, the storage area under the garage was narrower than the garage. So it probably was structurally not as sound as you would build it today. And so that was the intention to shore up that lower floor of the garage. And yes, I think it is safe to say that staff assumed it was going to be this ADU.
Okay.
Quinn, what happens? I'm sorry. When a, when a building permit gets put on hold, what does that look like physically? I mean, is there something marked somewhere? I mean, how?
And so this was all during COVID as well. So there was, you know, Irene was in the office one day, Brian was in the office one day. I don't think our verbal communication was as was happening as well as it does now, right? With everybody in the office together. So I, I don't know because I wasn't here. I don't know, but typically, yes. If a building permit gets on hold, my office is right next door to Brian's and he tells me, but it's marked in our thank you. I work. Online permitting system.
So, sorry, let me just ask a, ask a silly question. So the garage initially, originally was wider than the old storage room beneath it.
Yes.
And the old storage room had those, I'll call them the like sort of cantilevered, be, you know, structure that you see sort of all over, all over Belvedere, where the, where the garage seems to sort of hang, hang off, hang off a cliff supported by some little toothpicks.
No, it had walls.
It had walls. Okay.
Yes. It had walls that were narrower than the top floor.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. So on the plans that were approved by Irene.
The exemption?
The exemption. In June of twenty-two or July?
June.
June. Did they have the French side doors on it and all the other windows other than the ones in the back?
Yes, they mirrored the plans for the ADU.
Okay.
The elevations mirrored the plans for the ADU.
And did they show the, the existing space that was below the garage was a hundred and eighty-eight square feet?
There's a portion in the back, because it's on a slope, that had a, I think, a concrete floor and it had a ceiling height of greater than six feet. So from the very beginning of two thousand and twenty-one, there was a hundred and eighty-eight square feet in that area that was counted towards the floor area.
Okay, and then, but now we have five hundred and forty-six feet.
Yes.
So was that on the design review exemption also? The additional square footage?
No.
So he got the additional square footage without design review approval?
So to clarify, that just got built.
It got built with the building permit. And yes, and an exemption approval.
Yeah, okay, so it.
It's, well, it went from, well, no, actually, Pat, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It was still dirt, so he, that wasn't considered floor area. At that point. Right? Because it was all dirt going up a hill towards the street. And except for the part in the back that was a hundred and eighty-eight square feet, it had walls. So it looked like it could be a storage area, but there was a dirt floor, so it was not defined as floor area per our code.
So then he got the whole five hundred and forty-six square feet. And then he had to cut and fill in order to build that retaining wall?
Well, it's not floor area now, remember. He's, he wasn't get, he didn't get added floor area because it's still dirt.
So. Okay. I also noticed on the application that this construction time limit wasn't checked off.
Which application?
This one, three twelve. And that he's spending twelve dollars a square foot.
That goes back to Commissioner Seidel's question. We met with the architect and asked what the intention was with this added floor area because we needed a evaluation for the project and they we didn't get it. So maybe they can answer it tonight.
Okay, and then I think maybe my final question is got to find it. On the chart zoning parameters chart. He's got thirty percent and then he's proposing thirty-three percent. Do those numbers job with five forty-six? Because I thought I saw somewhere else here that I was just leafing through and can't find it. That he I don't know, it was a four thousand eighty-seven figure and it was existing and proposed? Oh yeah, here it is. So on page two of nine of the application for design review. It shows existing four thousand eighty-one and proposed four thousand eighty-one point forty-one square feet, which matches the maximum floor area for that lot. So do those figures, I mean, it's hard to say that if he didn't have approval for the square footage, why would his existing be what he's also proposing? So what was the existing square footage from his project? That he completed? Do we know that figure? Is it like thirty-eight hundred something?
We, we'd have to look into.
Have to find it.
Find it.
Can I ask a question, Pat?
Sure, sure. Okay.
Yep.
So, so if the, if the applicant wants to keep this as have this as floor space, it could still be an ADU. Because that would be allowed in the side yard setback. Or if the applicant wanted to have it as living space, not as an ADU, would they be required then to move that portion of the wall in?
It depends on how the commission decides on the variance.
I'm just trying to understand the scenario. So there's no scenario where that wouldn't that wall would be required to be removed?
Yes, if the commission denies the variance, then the wall has to be.
Has to move.
Yes.
Okay.
But the variance is, does not lie on the design review. In other words, we can bring a variance to the commission without design review. So you could be inclined to approve the variance and deny the design review if you made those findings.
In which case they, it would just stay the way it is, I guess.
Yes.
So they wouldn't have to move the wall, it would just exist as it is as, no.
Oh, if you grant variance, it stays as is. You don't move.
If you prove it, it stays as is. Yeah, okay. Sorry, I had it backwards.
Are there other questions for staff?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I have, I have one. Is there a proposal by the applicant and maybe the applicant can, can, can address this if staff doesn't know? To have an ADU elsewhere on the property?
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify again, if this is not if this is allowed to be just extra floor area, then the applicant could apply for an ADU in the future on the property. A separate ADU.
They can apply for an ADU whether it's floor area or not. They could convert it into floor area, whether it's considered, whether it stays as is, as dirt, or if it's finished floor area.
Okay.
So going back to Commissioner Seidel's question, which I also was, is that we're asking, we're being asked for design review for a floor, for a slab. So, but we don't know how the space is going to be used, which I know you've tried to figure that out. So is this a complete application if we don't know what the use of the slab is?
I believe he's just asking for living space at this point. Obviously, there were requirements if it were to be a bedroom or a kitchen or any of those types of things, but if it's just an empty room. Yes, that's exactly what he's asking for.
But we're only asking to put in the concrete floor, no plumbing, no electrical, right?
There's no floor plan. We, when typically every application that comes before the planning commission and it's required to have a floor plan.
So why is it here if we don't have that floor plan?
I don't know. I mean, I think we've tried to get that information from the applicant.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I don't think this is a complete application.
Okay, all right. Are there other questions for the staff? Okay, all right. Thank you. So I'd like to invite the applicant to speak about the project.
Okay. Good evening. I've got a little presentation I'll just go through and then I'll come back and try to address some of the questions and comments we've already had. First of all. We, I think we have to promote you so we can see the presentation. Well, I'm not, I'm just going to read, I'm going to make the statement, then I'll present if that's okay. Okay. I don't want you to be distracted by, well, I don't know, I could I could share my screen. Just so. Whatever works for you. Yeah, let me do that and then I'll read through my comments first. So, let's see. Okay. This is just one page out of our application with additional information on it. But we'll first start by stating that we're not in agreement with the findings of staff and we've we've outlined that all in a letter that we submitted. And I don't think there's enough time to go through all the individual points of that. And it's probably not worthwhile. But we're glad to ask or answer any questions at the end of this presentation. First of all, we're trying to make clear what we are asking for. The variance has nothing to do with allowable area. It simply has to do with reducing the setback, excuse me, the setback on the side yard. As was mentioned, the original storage area below the garage was also non-conforming. It was approximately eight feet five. Sorry, let me just if I can zoom in on this. This blue line represents the original enclosure, which was approximately eight feet five from the property line. The variance we're requesting is to simply encroach an additional two feet, three and a half inches, which is this red area towards the property line. This variance would allow forty-five, sorry, forty-six point five nine square feet of additional area. It was already kind of the history of how we got to this point through getting approval and permits incorrectly is why we're back here trying to get a variance to approve what was already approved, in our, in our opinion. There's been several assertions that a ADU permit was applied for. That is not true. I'd like to see the record of that. We did apply for planning commission approval. We received that. We were in the course of construction and we were advised by Brian Van San not to pull that permit because our expect, the construction timeline was going to be coming to an end and it would have pushed us out beyond those limits. Regardless, we still ended up going overtime and being fined. During that process, well, how we got to where we are is that we submitted permits for a structural plan that restructured the garage foundation, the entire front yard and the support for B Tro. In order to install these improvements, the existing storage room below the garage had to be disassembled. All of which was supported on four telephone calls, no foundation other than those telephone calls. Subsequent, subsequently, it became clear that the entire garage support was inadequate. The engineer, owner and Irene Borba observed this and agreed to make changes. We were asked to submit for a DR exemption, exemption for the revised elevations. That is what got approved. Additionally, new structural plans were submitted, approved and built and inspected. So we're back to the point of trying to get a variance for what was, in our opinion, legitimately approved and constructed. Staff is not supporting the necessary findings for approval of the various in design review. We've gone through and outlined our points to counter theirs in our letter. I don't think we can again, have time to go through those. We'd like to point out the contradiction in those findings to previous cases on this exact same property. In two thousand and eighteen, there was a whole nother plan, which was to demolish the entire existing structure, garage, et cetera, and rebuild. At that time, a variance for this very right side setback was approved at three feet ten. We were asking for six feet one. And that same case in two thousand and eighteen allowed a thirty-four percent increase in allowable floor area ratio. These two examples demonstrate the willingness of staff to support variances with much greater impact than they requested, those requested in this case. So in summary, we believe that our requests are reasonable, fair and consistent with past determinations made by planning staff and their planning permission. With that, there were some questions regarding the elevations and window placement. So I'm going to show you a little bit of that history. In two thousand and twenty-one, the entire structure or entire residence and garage and storage was going through a major window replacement project. We went through design review. We added windows and doors replacements to, to every structure regardless of where they were, whether they're being remodeled or not. This lower elevation was what was approved previously. Window on the south facing wall, three on the east facing wall and, excuse me, a front door on the north facing. Our designer view exemption after we needed to repair and restructure the garage is substantially the same. The only difference is that we change the single large window to two smaller windows. And yes, this looks a lot like what the ADA, ADU that we submitted for planning was. Because there was no reason not to do the same. It was already consistent with the look of the house. It was already approved. However, there was no ADA permit ever applied for. Staff keeps asserting that it's not true. And I'd like to see the, the written record. We hear a lot of conversational records with no written proof. We've built this structure with approvals with concrete documents that show the approvals. So we think it's not fair that the findings can't be found in this case when they were found in a much more extreme case in the past. Sorry, I've been sitting here way too long. Left your mind this. So maybe in regards to the floor areas, there's also a design review that we're talking about, the design review application. We request a designer review approval for three hundred and fifty-eight point six two square feet of new area within an existing enclosure. That is the net difference between the original hundred and eighty-eight and the current five hundred and forty-six. The original structure. The original structure under there was a small storage room, hundred and eighty square feet. This because it's over the limit that can be administratively approved, had to go to design review. As for what this is supposed to be, there was no intent to add any improvements or do permits for construction that could be reversed if the variance was not accepted. So all we intended to do was put a floor slab in there so that it can be used for storage on concrete instead of dirt. The design review of the interior seems irrelevant because the exterior is already approved. So with that, I think that's, that's all the presentation I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Could you go back to the first page where you had, you were showing what was there and how you have the little red part? Yeah, yeah, here, here. Okay, so you have the blue line and the blue line is what was existing that represents a hundred and eighty-eight square feet?
Actually, that is the exterior walls. If I draw this line, this was dirt behind here.
Okay.
Subsequently, that was excavated to put this wall in. So the hundred and eighty-eight feet was right here.
Oh, was it in this blue line thing here? Okay. And what's this red line? What's this red line?
The one I just created?
Uh, no, this, well, you can't see what I'm pointing to, but down in the gray section and it goes like a bigger square. What, what, what does that red line mean? Yeah, that line.
That's the footprint of the, of the garage above. That's the original footprint of the garage above.
Okay, and then the little.
Alignment here, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then over here, this little square rectangular kind of looking thing to the, well, to my left. Was, was that created new or was that existing?
This piece here?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that is, that is part of that area, three fifty-eight square feet, which is basically took this entire shell and subtracted out one eighty-eight. The, the balance would be three hundred and fifty-eight, which is this area, this perimeter.
Okay. So you okay. So do you know how much cut and fill you did in that area? Because that I think was probably quite a bit of cut and fill.
It was that the, there were originally four telephone pole posts sort of in this area. And the footing or concrete around the bottom of this post was completely exposed when this was dug out and this probably went down. I mean, this wall is probably ten or twelve feet tall inside.
Okay, and oh, so I want, could you go back to that last page you were on showing the difference between? You know, down, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Is it this one?
Yeah, this one here. Above the red square, there's the one in the middle and you say that the only change you made was that you added one window to that where they're used, there, there was one window and now you have two windows.
Correct.
And that, that wasn't on the plans.
This was on the plans we, the, these were on, on the construction plans for rep, you know, resupplying the garage. The windows were there. This, this bow window is there or bow window is there and all the windows were on it.
So those were all on, on the plans that you submitted for the repair for the garage.
Correct.
Yeah. So that also brings up a question. On the chart, in some spots it says it's six feet four and other spots it says it's six one, so it's six one.
It's at an angle and so I was giving you the, the worst case.
Property, the property line's at an angle, so it's, it's six one.
This, it's wider.
So should the variance be showing what the variance is? Variance, variance.
Question, the bear, if I had to rewrite the variance language, it would be from existing non-conforming of eight foot five, the blue line to six foot one, but considering it's already built. You know, I mean, what do you want me to say?
Variance is for the garage wall to sit six foot four inches from the property line.
It's six point four, not.
Sorry. It's six four, it's the closest to the property line, so it should be six feet four inches.
Oh, so you use the closest to the property line. Okay, thank you. I think that's it for this moment.
Are there questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask the question that was asked earlier. Do you you know, it's down as being habitable space, but do you have any idea on the occupancy here? What, what?
Yes.
intend to do with it?
Yes, that's the conversation we had. We originally on our DR app because we were asking, you know, there's no point improve or improving a building without having the variance done. We were asked to provide a DR app. This original statement was requesting designer review approval for three hundred and fifty-eight square feet of new area within an existing enclosure built entirely under existing street side garage. Currently, there is no floor. Pending the outcome of design review, the intent is to permit and install a floor. The exterior elevations for these projects were granted as granted the design review exception previously. So planning staff suggested that we indicate future use of the enclosed area. And we stated it here, assuming approval of the variance and confirmation of the existing DR approval, a concrete floor will be installed. They told us that was necessary to be even in DR is to have some improvement. So, and then we offered some ideas of what it potentially could be. Is, you know, they keep wanting us to make it an ADU so this whole variance goes away. That's not the desire of of the resident at this time. If they did do that, they could go all the way four feet from the property line. They don't want to do that. They respect their neighbors, they respect the privacy, they, they had a stair in that setback before. They removed it. Now we have two windows, so they have not decided the ultimate outcome of what that would be. It could be a fitness room, guest room or an office. Those were the discussed options. We're not asking for approval of the use or asking for approval of the additional floor area, which is beyond what they can approve, excuse me, approve without planning commission. It's my understanding.
Okay, I have one question.
Square feet or something like that.
So I have one more question for you. Do you know what the final square footage was on the project that was completed, not including this space?
There would be this minus. Well, they never re-improved that storage area, so it would be four hundred, five hundred and forty-six from or eighty, four thousand eighty-one. So thirty-five, thirty-four.
Isn't the square footage greater than that? Did you find Sammy on the last project?
On the square footage on this property, I do know that dating back to my time with it was two, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. They, they always were okay in terms of square footage and we verified that.
We had, this owner had laser scan of this building to verify.
Okay.
So that's what this, this represents that.
All right, I'll let it go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
So not specific to this, but related to the property overall, there was a design review in October of twenty-two for a landscaping plan to restore landscaping down the back of the property all the way to the strip.
That's correct.
Could you tell us the status of that?
I'd have to ask Scott. He is on if he can be promoted. I know it's growing back and it's been.
Scott is promoted and he can.
Revegetated. He's been reveget, it's been revegetated. I don't know his current state.
I'm here anytime.
Go ahead, Scott, we can hear you.
Yeah, well. You know, I, I, I really feel for the commissioners because unfortunately it, it sounds very confusing to you, but the application you're looking at was driven, every, every bit of it, the way it looks, the way it feels was driven by the staff who instructed our architect to design it and present it that way. In his own application to you, he says that upon getting this several hundred feet approved, they then, he will go forward with more use and building out whatever else may go in there, including maybe as a billiard table or what have you. And he's already put in there that that would be the case. I would say to make this more clear is maybe ask the question. Why did Irene Borda in design review exception approve these walls coming straight down from the garage above? Without an ADU permit. And the reason for that is evident in the picture of that design review application. If we can pull it up, Dave, maybe you can pull it up. Let's take a look at those two pictures of the telephone poles holding up this garage, the two pictures that were a part of the design review exemption application to Irene that she approved the very next day. So we have that, it's a part of the staff report as well. It's the last three pages of the staff report are these two pictures. We've seen them before. Right there. Let's take a look. Let's take a look at what we're seeing in this picture as the old, old saying goes, a picture is worth a thousand words. If you can see this garage above, and by the way, that's a garage with I think a, a big A-frame on top of it. Including a four inch thick concrete pad all the way to the exterior walls of that garage above. That's how heavy that is. You put two cars on it, it's really heavy. And then you can see these four telephone poles. That's the only thing that was supporting that garage and any cars that would have been parked on top of it. What else you can see in this picture are all these horizontal boards to the right side of the picture, to the left side of the picture and straight back all the way back to at the very back of the garage, which is very close to beach road. All of those horizontal boards are forms, F O R E N, F O R M S. Concrete building and construction forms. When those boards come down and we have those pictures, when those boards come down, what's left are concrete retaining walls. And inside those retaining walls toward the back, because we're looking here at the downhill side of that garage above. If you were to extend all the way through to the driveway apron where the garage door would be, the twelve foot wide garage door. That's retaining wall all the way back past the telephone poles. That is a concrete retaining wall, twelve feet high, supported even further beyond that closer to beach road by four twenty-four inch diameter, thirty foot deep buried into bedrock concrete and steel piers. Now, the reason those are there is because of all the other landscape hardscape that was being installed pursuant to permit. So if you look at the boards on the right, that is the future landing of the staircase. So that landing, that is all steel and concrete. The stairs go down further to the right, that's more piers. In fact, our landscape plan has.
Mr. Robertson. I just wanna get you just back on topic if you don't mind, because we, I think we're clear on all of the, the concrete and the retaining walls, but just to just to wrap it up.
Here we go. All right, so let's, let's address one point. Should this wall in question that was two feet, extended two feet toward the neighboring property line? Should that be removed? If you remove that, given now that the telephone poles are gone and that the structural concrete beneath these walls that come straight down from the garage above, those are all structural. You can't just take those out. And the one that's closest to the property line, if you look over to the left, if you look at the next picture, for example, go up one, so we see the next picture that was submitted with the design review exemption. If you look through the garage, look past the four telephone poles on the far end, this is the wall in question. You can see that it's a stepped down, it's stepped down. That step down is steel and concrete installed on top of additional steel and concrete piers that are on that, that plane, that elevation plane. They are directly, that wall is directly underneath the southernmost wall of the then existing garage that's still existing. So that whole section of upper garage is being supported on the wall that's in question on top of that steel and concrete system. The reason that steel and concrete stepped down wall is there is because it's a perpendicular support to the twelve foot retaining wall on the right and beyond that, four huge thirty foot deep buried in bedrock piers holding up beach road.
Okay, Mr. Robertson, we're, we're over time, so if you could just wrap it up, please.
Well, we've been sitting here for, I think, about three hours. You could have given us a different day, maybe could have brought us up. If you wanted to hold us to forty-five minutes, perhaps you could have had us as number one instead of number three. I will tell you that that staff report, and I won't go into it, it has a lot of false information. But I would say for our purposes this evening, that if you don't want to approve the variance, okay, well, we know what to do next. I'd say that all we're really looking for here is to get that wall approved under a variance so that we then can come back with a more formalized floor plan, which we were prohibited from submitting to you tonight by your staff.
So, Mr. Robertson, I have a question for you. So did I hear you say that these pictures were the pictures that were taken the day Irene came out for the design review exception?
These are, these are the pictures that Irene asked me to put on the design review exemption application that was dated, I believe, June sixteen twenty twenty-two. She signed it and approved it June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. This is the condition that she saw, except it was much worse. I think the day that she was there, it was raining and it looked really bad. Just imagine, look at all that steel and concrete all around.
Mr. Robertson, I hate to, I hate to interrupt you, but it, to me, it looks like you proceeded with the construction before you got permission to proceed.
Absolutely not. Do you see all those wood and boards and everything? All of that is a stamped and approved landscape plan. Seventy-five piers include, we're looking at about twenty-five piers right now. So in fact, those boards that you see going at forty-five degree angle and those telephone poles are, are engineers and our general contractor put those up because they were fearful that this thing was gonna twist and fall and collapse. There was contrary to what Rebecca said. Rebecca said there was a concrete floor in that former storage room. That's false. That's not true. She was saying that the cutaway plywood above it somehow that was structural, those were walls. Oh, yeah? Go straight down, show me where the foundation is, where those walls that have been cut away in order to reinforce the property. You, you know, what you're looking at here is a construction site. The reason that we went in there and said almost as an emergency to Irene, Irene, look at what's happening here. This whole garage system is faulty. The engineer, the contractor, the architect, Irene's own eyes looked at this and said, that certainly doesn't look safe. And by the way, you look at the design review application and you read the whole narrative up in the right hand corner, it's about 15 lines long. It addresses all the reasons why we went in for design review and exception and needed to remove these telephone poles. And there isn't one mention of ADU. So I really think it's very strange that you have this whole conversation revolving around an ADU that wasn't any part at all of having to remove these telephone poles.
I'd like to ask the chair, if I could ask a question of staff.
Yeah.
I know we're over, but may I respond to the chair's question?
So I think we're over, we're over time. We're quite over time now. So can we, can we allow a question of staff? Okay, yes, please.
Thank you. So obviously the planning at some point and then building was involved in this. Does the structure that's standing there now is, does, has that been finalized? Is that something that the city approved?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's important. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
I didn't, the answer, I think the architect wasn't sure, but I'm curious about the landscaping plan that came to us in September of 22 to restore the landscaping from the house down to the strip. Was that?
Are you asking Mr. Robertson?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Robertson.
Give us that answer.
If you could just keep it brief, please, on the landscaping, that the hill was, that was denuded. Has it been replanted?
Is he?
I, I finalized the, that portion, Kevin, that you were talking about, the landscape final, I, I did that as part of the planning final in May of last year.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none on Zoom? Okay. Closed public comment. So I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Don, would you like to lead us off?
Yeah, and I, and I, obviously I'm struggling. I, it's a you know, to, to, I think to understand why we got where we were requires some things that I don't know. I don't know whose memory is better than somebody else's. I don't know whose sense of honesty or integrity is better than somebody else's. I don't know who had an off day that day. Was it the applicant or the planning director? I, we're just left with what we have, which is going back, we, you know, we have a signed exemption. And clearly we can argue that that should not have been signed or was only signed with the understanding that it was for an ADU. And, you know, part of me, I suspect there's more even to be said about this than what's in front of us. And that's where I'm going to leave it for a second. I want to hear what other commissioners say before I talk about which way I might go.
Thank you. Pat?
And so we're in a conundrum. Because I think what Commissioner Seidel's pointing to and Commissioner?
Shinsky.
Shinsky. I was gonna, I was saddened in my mind and then it wasn't coming out of my mouth, said is it went, it went through planning, it went through building. Obviously, it was realized too late that it needed the variance. And it was finalized. And you know, this is not like a staircase that we can tell the people rip it out. It's actually a structural wall. Which did have approval. It was missing the variance which was needed. And again, as Commissioner Shinsky said, we don't have the full picture of, of everything that was going on because the person who approved it is not with the city any longer. I personally would, I agree with the staff report. But I think in practicality, to ask for the wall to be moved is unreasonable on many levels. And, but I also can't make for the design review because I really feel the application is just for a slab and we don't know what the, the space is going to be used for. And the 188 feet that was there to begin with was storage. And Mr. Robertson admits that it was dirt, so it was never covered in the floor area. So the entire 546, oh, it was over.
388 was always part of.
Over six feet and it was already included. All right, forget that part. I'll skip that. But I, I just feel that approving a space without knowing what that space is going to be used for and with more detailed plans of what's going to go in there, that I don't think this is really a design review application. So my feeling at this time, and I'm open for change, but would be to approve the variance and deny the design review and have them come back with what they're going to do with the space so we can analyze it.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Sure. I mean, I don't, I agree that it's, it's, it's not clear and how we arrived at this place, but we are here. I can make the findings for the variance. I am wondering, I mean, do we technically need more information for design review? Or is, do we have sufficient information to make the finding? I mean, you said that earlier there.
A look at what the design review findings are and they typically apply to the exterior of a building. However, part of the submittal requirements are floor plans. You know, I don't think that with their, say they want to make it into a gym, I would say it's a fair guess to say that they're not going to change the windows or the doors, right, which would impact or the colors and materials of those walls, but I don't know. So, you know.
But do we need more information if it's a storage area? Because that's what they're suggesting it is technically going to be until they decide it's something else. So do we need floor plans for a storage room? Or do, is what we have sufficient?
I think what we have is sufficient for a storage room.
For a storage room. And, and again, I think that's what they're, that's what it's, they're stating anyways on the application it will be used for. All right, then I can make the findings for the design review as well, for condition that the use of the space is limited to a storage area until they come back for another DR.
And that would be verified at the time of building permit.
Great, thank you. Jenna?
Hi. So I actually am kind of the, kind of the opposite in the sense that I find that the design review is actually the, the easier part for me in the, in the sense that you know, the, the lower story of the garage. You know, is, is, is consistent with the rest of the build in terms of materials and and the windows, the windows were approved, et cetera. For me, the variance is, I'll, I'll use the word conundrum again. And when I look at the requirements for the findings for the variance, you know, the first one is the granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone. I know that staff presented that there were other properties along, along that part of Beach Road where similarly had very, had, had, had variances. I would be interested to know just because there are a number of of garages that are, I'll say, hanging on to, hanging on to, hanging on toothpicks. Whether, when the downstairs of those garages are built out and we see it quite, quite often, whether it is common to, to carry, carry over the variance such that the you know, not just the space with the toothpicks, but you know, but the full area of the, of the garage, of the garage is usable. But then we get to be of, of the findings because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location or surroundings. The strict application of the zoning ordinance section would deprive the property of privileges joined by other properties in the vicinity. So once, so I think the special circumstance for this, for this property, whether it's truly a special, special circumstance or not, is the poor construction and underpinnings of the original garage such that it required the complete shoring and immense amounts of steel and concrete and new, and new walls in order for the, you know, for the garage, which, which was approved not to, not to fall down. I, I do think at this point, you know, given that the, the wall of the, of the, of the lower level of the garage is concrete and steel, trying to move the, trying to move the wall, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be impossible. It would be impractical and kind of silly. So the, 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 quite, this is what, this is why I, I'm really struggling with the approval of the, of the approval of the variance. I, I think that decisions were made and assumptions were made, especially during the time, during the time of COVID by both the homeowner and by, and by staff at the time that led us to where we, to where we are now. So I I don't think it really makes a difference whether or not the space is going to be used as a guest room, as an exercise room or a storage. I think the space is going to be there because it's holding up the rest of the garage. So whether or not we allow them to put a, put a concrete floor down. I, I almost feel like despite what, what the findings are that I have, that I have to find, I kind of feel like the ship has sailed for better or for worse. This isn't really a very good answer, but it's what I have.
Thank you. Alex?
Yeah, I find my thoughts shifting on this literally as we talk about it. I mean, there's a, there's a better outcome, which would simply be that the owner would put an ADU in and they wouldn't need a variance. Part of me tried to figure out if there's a way we can construct our denial or approval in a way that would urge them to do that, but I'm not really coming up with anything quite clever enough. I, I do think it's impractical. There's a lot of heavy engineering and money invested in making this garage stand up properly. It seems at this point, given that they did that part of it with city approvals, I, I feel that I have a hard time rendering a decision that would make them change that. So you know, that tends to argue in terms of finding in favor of the variance. And then it's sort of like Jenna just said, once you, if you allow that wall to stay there, the space is there, then it kind of is what it is. And it does look on the exterior like they represented. I feel there's something, there's something amiss in the process. But it's kind of water under the bridge or water under the garage at this point. So I, I might, pending the way this conversation goes, I, I might just be inclined to make the findings in favor of this, even though it goes against my grain.
Thank you. So this is a very complicated one. And I agree with you, Alex, there is something amiss about the whole thing from start to finish. It's really challenging when an applicant misconstrues, ignores codes, standards, processes. It's discouraging because we're here in service of the community and the process only works if we're all working in cooperation and with a shared respect for processes and rules. And it's our job up here to try to apply standards as fairly and consistently as we can across all projects. So in this instance, I, I am in agreement with the staff report. I also agree that this is a very incomplete application. I might be more amenable to approving a variance if I understood the entirety of the project and could look at it more holistically. I have never, and I've only been doing this for, for less, a little less than four years, but I've never seen an application quite like this that's so incomplete and there seems to be a lot of misdirection and confusion and obfuscation. And that makes it very hard for us to do our job and to do it well. So I would say that I cannot make the findings tonight and I would encourage the applicant to think about the whole space and how it might be used and to come back in a spirit of transparency and cooperation with something that we can actually look at and evaluate appropriately. So those are my, my thoughts on the project. So Don, I, you, you haven't really.
So, so I would certainly not making the argument that concrete poured should come out. Although I'm troubled a little bit why the, you know, the, 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 the presentation seemed to focus on the, the structural need to do this because of this, you know, the insufficient support underneath and the cantilevers and so forth. You know, people have been doing sound engineering with cantilevers for hundreds, if not thousands of years. There's lots of different structural ways to solve this other than running a wall straight down. But you know, what's done is done in that regard. But I think for the moment I am going to have to join the chair in a agreeing with the staff's findings. There's something amiss about this. The communication is poor. The, the process went off the rails. And I too would like to see some more detail about intent and plans going forward in the spirit of transparency. This, obviously this, you know, just hearing the, what's gone on before, this isn't kind of the first. This, obviously, this, you know, just hearing the, what's gone on before, this isn't kind of the first issue, I guess, with this project, which I'd like to hear a little bit more about as well. Not that, you know, we're going back and reevaluating that, but I, it would help my own understanding of it. I think for tonight, though, I'm going to have to agree with the staff's finding about not proceeding with the variance tonight.
All right, thank you. So can I please get a motion? Oh, wait, yeah.
It sounds like, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So you, some of you are looking for more information on the historical components of this project. Future plans and maybe saying it's an incomplete project. So I, you know, there's always an option of continuance too. You know, as opposed, so that, I'm just putting that out there.
Thank you. I was just gonna, yeah, thank you. So that's up to the applicant, I, I think, if they would like to, for us to continue the item and you can come back with something that's more complete and a, just a more clear picture for us. Or if you would like us to vote on the motions in front of us tonight.
Am I, can you hear me again?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I appreciate all your comments. Some, most of them seem to be relatively fair. I don't know that I would agree there's some conspiracy or something amiss. I think we'll just remind you, there was a reason for Irene Boarder to be on site to look at these toothpicks as Jenna says. I would say we may do something again in the future. I'd like to see the vote. It seems like most of the comments were going in one direction until the chair spoke. And now you've got Rebecca echoing the chair and maybe going for a motion to table it and continue it. And I think I'd like to get a ruling, if you don't mind, on the fact that there isn't anything on this property that wasn't permitted, inspected and finalized. And that includes everything about this garage, everything about the.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Can you explain to him what the difference is, just to make sure he understands?
Yeah. So if we, if we vote on it tonight and it's denied, then, then he would have to come back with a whole new application fee, all of that. Or, or, or appeal it. Okay. So is that clear, Mr. Robertson? Whereas a continuance would allow you to just continue the same application. Miss, Mr. Robertson?
You're gonna have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Verizon. Well, yeah, if we're denied tonight, we're going to go to the Belvedere City Council. And we'll plead our case there.
Okay.
I mean, I will take, there's, there's nothing about this property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I please get a motion?
I'm gonna, can I start with motion two first?
Yes.
I, I moved to adopt the resolution denying, oh, I'm sorry.
We only have one motion.
We only have one motion. Okay. I moved to adopt the resolution denying a variance to allow the structure to encroach into the ten foot side yard setback at three twelve Beach Road.
I have a second.
Denied.
Can I get a second?
Yes, second.
To deny the variant.
To, to deny the variance.
In front of me. So I, I'm gonna vote against the motion because I want to.
We have design review.
We have both motions.
Right, but the motions here are written. If we have to vote on these, they both say deny.
So we vote on deny?
Yeah, well.
We'll say, if we say yes, then it's denied.
Oh, no, I get it. I get it. I was gonna vote no.
But we have design review too.
Well, I know we have to vote on the first one first.
Okay, so first one's variance?
Kevin, Kevin.
I asked, I asked if I, I could read, start with the second one.
Yeah, which is, I just need a second.
Right, so Alex seconded.
Okay, okay, all in.
I think Dawn did.
Okay, okay, all in favor.
Denied.
I.
I.
No.
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 Are you?
No.
Okay, everyone voted? Okay.
Yeah, three, three noes, two yeses.
Okay, three noes, two yeses. There is. So two.
So the no means, wait a minute, let's get this.
No, the no would mean not to approve the denial. Excuse my double negative, but.
So no is not to approve it.
Not to approve the denial, in which case we have to decide whether you want to come back with a resolution granting the variance. Or if you want us to try and craft something on the fly, in which case I would defer to staff as to whether or not that's a good idea.
We would have to have another resolution to approve the variance, if, if we wanted to.
Denying it, and if we wanted to go through, then we would vote no, right?
Right, we did.
Or does there need to be a separate?
Have to have a separate motion that says we, I move to approve.
You, you, you could direct, you could make a motion to direct staff to come back with a resolution approving the variance, which would be put on consent calendar.
That would be an option.
Trying to craft it now at ten twenty six might be a little dicey.
Okay.
So we have two yeses, so two people supporting no on the variance and four people supporting yes to find the variance. We have six of us, so.
Well, Jenna, you said, you said no to, to, right. So four people have said they do not approve the denial of the variance. So the motion to deny, four of us said no, we don't agree with that.
So that motion failed.
So that failed.
So I would recommend a motion directing staff to come back with a resolution approving the variance and to be put on the consent calendar at the planning commission's next meeting. And then after that, you can turn to the design review question.
And so we don't vote on just.
Sorry, mute it. We don't vote on the design review tonight?
You, you could give staff direction. Right now, there is a resolution before you that, for denial of the design review. You can decide to adopt that denial. Or you could again direct staff to come back with a resolution approving design review. We put on the consent calendar at the commission's next meeting.
When you say it's, it's, I'm sorry, when you say that it's complicated to do right now, so it's beyond just rewording this one statement because the actual text.
Want to put in findings to support the application.
So it isn't just about changing the language here.
Wire some thinking.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So the only thing is, I don't know if it throws a monkey in the wrench or wrench in the monkey, whatever.
You won't be here.
Composition changes next month. So I don't know if I would put it.
So if it gets appealed, then Commissioner Burke and Commissioner Karpia will not, will have to recuse themselves probably.
I think so.
Because you've already formed an opinion.
But, but right now it's moving in the direction of approving it.
Right.
Right.
But you'll also have a new commission who will have no context and background on this project. And how would they be able to?
Typically, they would read the minutes of this meeting.
Okay.
And staff reports of this meeting. And yes, I mean, the business of the commission carries on even when the commissioners change, of course.
Okay, just play devil's advocate. So if I were to so move, and I'm not, because this is just being, if I were to say, I move to adopt the resolution approving a variance to allow the structure to encroach into the ten foot, why would that not be sufficient?
Because there's no such a resolution before you.
The resolution isn't worded right.
Want, that we, that you know you want to make in order to make the findings.
Okay.
Required for the variance.
Right, right. So the actual formal written resolution doesn't exist tonight.
We, we, again, we could do it on the fly, but it's not how we do our best work.
So, and do we have to move staff to?
I, I think direction to staff, a formal direction to staff is appropriate here.
Okay.
So are we still gonna vote on motion one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So before we have, before we get there.
The motion to.
So I'm not gonna move. I'm just gonna give formal direction, right?
I think if the consensus of the council agrees with you, then that would be sufficient.
Okay. All right. So assuming council, the, the majority agree with me, which we'll find out in a second, is I'm asking staff to draft a resolution that would be, that would approve a variance to allow the structure to encroach into the ten foot side back side yard setback at three twelve Beach Road and to include it on the consent calendar at the next planning commission meeting. Who among you agrees with me?
I agree with you, Kevin. I stand with Kevin.
Well, I, you know, I'll agree with you to the extent that I acknowledge I was in the minority on the first vote and so the majority will prevail on this. And so, yes, I will support it.
No.
Okay. All right. It's a good way to, it's a good last meeting for me. Let me try the other motion. I moved to adopt the resolution denying design review to install three hundred and fifty eight square feet floor area within the existing exterior walls at three twelve Beach Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
To deny.
I, to, to deny.
To deny.
So anyone else said two in favor?
So, yeah.
Okay, and I'm, all those opposed?
No, I, I, I want to deny it.
Then you want to vote yes on the resolution.
Yes.
So you, so you say yes.
I want to deny design.
Design review.
Yeah.
So we have one, two, three, four. And Jenna is?
Jenna?
Are you yes or no?
I am a yes, let's deny it.
I'm, I'm a no.
All right.
I don't want to deny it.
Okay.
I don't.
And you're voting no, sir.
Okay. So just from a process perspective for Mr. Robertson, this, this new variance resolution, it will go straight to city council? Does it come, it will, or will it, it'll come back?
If he wants to appeal the denial of design review, he could do that, but I think that would not be his best approach. Given that it's not really a complete application.
Yeah, okay. So he will on consent.
In the meantime, he will be able to keep the wall where it is.
Yeah, but the variance request will come back on consent.
The approval, right.
The approval will come back just for, just so he is aware of what happens next.
So it's documented properly.
So next month it'll come back on consent.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yay.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I, meeting is adjourned.
Bye, everyone.
Feel better.
Thank you.
Thank you for not being here.
Hey, it's better for the.